Denfield, are you ready to go? Oh, you're back on mute. To many folks in the country and around the world. And it is 7:13 PM. We had a few technical difficulties in getting our virtual meeting going this evening, but thanks for your patience. And we are going to be broadcasting this meeting in a variety of ways. First of all, you can watch the live meeting on TV. It's on Comcast Channel 813 or Channel 16. You can watch on facebook.com/edinamn. Or you can watch on edinamn.gov/livemeetings. And then when we get to the two public hearing matters that we're going to have this evening, you can call in with live testimony at 1-800-374-0221. And then enter conference ID 6494715. You'll be put into the queue. And then someone will let you know when you can testify. Manager Neil will be monitoring the clock for live testimony. And you'll have three minutes to testify. He'll give you a heads up when you've got about 30 seconds to go. And then you need to think about wrapping up your testimony. And then Manager Neil will let you know when your testimony time is finished. So having provided those preliminaries on the virtual meeting this evening, I will call the matter, call the meeting to order. And roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson.
Here.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. The next matter on the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. And you will hear my mic only during the recital of the Pledge of Allegiance. And we will do that now. And I think you'll see a flag come up on the screen. To the flag of the United States of America.
America. And to the Republic for which stands one nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the meeting agenda or add to it in any form? Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as shown?
Some move.
Second.
Moved by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson. Member Anderson.
Jay.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. And the form of meeting agenda is approved. Next, we're moving on to community comment. Is there anyone listening to the meeting who wishes to speak to the council about a matter of concern to them this evening? You'll also have three minutes to express your concern or provide your comment.
Thank you very much, sir. We do have a couple of people on the line yet. Neither have indicated their desire to speak. Just as a reminder, once you call in, if you'd like to speak, please press star 1 to indicate you'd like to speak. Otherwise, we will assume that you are, at this point, just listening and not wanting to provide a comment. Again, please press star 1 if you'd like to speak.
Now, Director Venera, those folks on the line that are listening that may or may not wish to speak, it's my understanding from our past experience that this line is not meant as a way they can listen to the entire meeting. But if they want to listen to the entire meeting, they should use one of those other mechanisms. Is that correct?
That is correct. After our final public hearing tonight, we will end the intercall.
All right. Thank you. So folks that are listening in, remember that when we're finished with the second public hearing matter, this communication line will be closed down. All right. We can wait a minute. Director Venera, let me know when you think the time is right to move on to the next portion of the agenda.
I think it's safe to move on now. Thank you.
All right, good. And the reason we delayed for a minute or so was because we wanted to give the, any callers a chance to let folks know that they wanted to speak because we do have a delay here on the, on the matter, on the, on the meeting this evening. So the next part of this agenda, this part of the agenda is the city manager's response to community comments. As I recall, we didn't have any community comments last meeting. So Manager Neil, take it, you have no responses that you wish to make. I see you moving your head sideways. No? All right. All right. And we'll move on to the consent agenda. There are eight items on the consent agenda. Is there any council member that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Not seeing anyone or hearing anybody say anything about removing any items from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in its entirety?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion by Member Brindle, second by Member Staunton to approve the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. The consent agenda items are all approved in their entirety. I guess that's a little bit redundant, but consent agenda is approved. It's shown on the agenda. Now, we're going to move on to special recognitions and presentations. That portion of the agenda has three items in it this evening. The first proclamation deals with Parks to Kids Day in Edina. And Perry Vedder, our Park and Rec Director, is here to accept the proclamation. I'm going to read that proclamation, and it reads as follows. Proclamation, Parks to Kids Day. I'm not sure that isn't Kids to Parks Day, but we'll read it as follows. Whereas May 16, 2020 is the 10th Kids to Parks Day. Yeah, we got to change that header. To Kids to Parks Day, not Parks to Kids Day. So we can change that accordingly. I think Ms. Allison, you can do that, and we'll get it signed. And the proclamation, Kids to Parks Day, reads as follows. Whereas May 16, 2020 is the 10th Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. Whereas COVID-19 has impacted everyone, has limited our ability to interact with our beloved national, local, and state parks. And whereas the National Park Trust has decided to modify the 10th anniversary and instead celebrate May 16, 2020 as Kids to Park Day. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to retain an active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, hyperchlorestemia, and while practicing social distancing and following applicable safety guidance. And whereas Edina Park and Recreation has created free online activity challenges in conjunction with Kids to Parks Day. And whereas Edina Park and Recreation has created a reactivity box program that allows residents to order recreational themed activity kits online and have them shipped to their home. And now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina, Minnesota does hereby proclaim May 16, 2020 as Kids to Park Day. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
Some moved.
Yeah, a motion in the second by Member Anderson, moved by Member Brindle to declare May 16 as Kids to Parks Day unless you object to that and want to call it Parks to Kids Day. All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation by roll call vote? Here we go. Ms. Allison, roll call, please.
Before I do the roll call, is someone trying to address the mayor before roll call?
Yes. Yes. Perry.
Yes, thank you.
Well, I thought we'd adopt the proclamation first and then have Perry speak, but Perry may.
Mayor, I was just going to point out that due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the National Park Trust is recommending that we alter it from the last 10 years to create a Parks to Kids program where we're bringing parks to children because unfortunately, due to the social isolation factor, we are not able to go to parks as the regular schedule. So this is a one year, hopefully a one year anomaly to change this proclamation as Parks to Kids Day.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. That makes all the sense in the world. We're bringing parks to kids on May 16. So is there a motion to adopt the proclamation? And then we'll hear again from Park Director Vedder. We got that motion in the second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. And Director Vedder, any further comment you wish to make with regard to Parks to Kids Day?
Just a few quick comments, Mayor Hovland and members of the council. The National Park Trust has two main objectives. The first is land conservation, and the second is environmental education. So while normally we'd be highlighting the number of park amenities and program offerings that kids and their families could be doing to kick off the spring and summer season on Saturday, May 16. This year, obviously, the only known prevention to COVID-19 is to socially isolate. So I'd like to thank the recreation programming staff here at Edina Parks and Recreation for pivoting very quickly and identifying a number of offerings that we can bring to kids in their household. So the first is, we're currently offering a Step to It challenge that people can go out and on an individual or on a household basis, go out and walk and bike and record their mileage. That is able to be found on Better Together, the city's website, as well as another virtual program. It's called Dear Edina. And that's a Penn Pal program that connects seniors and students to correspond, also on Better Together. We already have 267 people signed up for that program. And then the third is the reactivity boxes that you had mentioned. We understand that right now, students are doing a lot of distance learning, and that equates to a lot of screen time. So rather than pivot to virtual programs where people would watch videos, we decided to create reactivity boxes where we compile a variety of different supplies, and our residents can order those. They are shipped to their home, very similar to other delivery package services. We're kind of operating in that sense right now. And bringing reactivity to your home that you can do with your, with your family and your children. We're currently out of the bugs and butterflies, but we've already got 72 people that have subscribed to that service, and we just launched it a little over a week ago. So again, thank you to our programming staff for pivoting in this time and going to ways that we can bring activities to families without adding screen time and still embracing what our, our mission for Parks and Recreation is.
Yeah, that's a terrific presentation. Any council comments? It looks like, you know, the reactivity box program, that was a terrific idea, and you've already, you've already got a relatively high level of participation on that. And then other folks that are really paying attention to what's going on in the Park and Rec system and participating as best they can under the circumstance. Good to see and good to hear about. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. And thanks for clearing things up for the old mayor. Well, we've been leaving the parks open and people, we've been cutting up people to stay socially separated. So still want to encourage those use of the parks. So thanks. Now, the next proclamation involves Emergency Medical Services Week. And we've got, I saw Chief Schmitz is with us this evening. Is it Chief Schmitz or it is Ryan Quinn? Going up as Chief Schmitz. So I'll read that proclamation that reads as follows. Emergency Medical Services Week, May 17 through the 23rd, 2020. Whereas Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service. Whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the Emergency Medical Services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out of hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of Emergency Medical Services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina does hereby proclaim the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2020 as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Edina with the theme EMS Strong, Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow. Encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week?
Some move.
Member Fisher.
Second.
Member Anderson. Discussion. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Well, I don't think in all the years that I've been on the city council, we've had a more important annual designation than this particular Emergency Medical Services Week designation, the time of COVID-19. Is, is Chief Schmitz with us? Oh, there he is.
I am, Mayor.
Chief, yes. Thanks for being here to accept this proclamation.
Yeah, I just thank you. And I, what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce you to our EMS chief, Ryan Quinn. That's a position that we created a couple of years ago, and I can't tell you the, the amount of work that he has been involved in in the last several months, especially the last couple of months, making sure our EMS system is running top notch and everybody's staying healthy and we're serving the community. So with that, I will introduce Chief Ryan Quinn, our EMS chief, and he can accept the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first off, I'd like to say thank you very much on behalf of our firefighter, paramedics, EMTs, and police officers who do a fantastic job with us as well with their first response. Thank you for adopting this, this proclamation. These last few months, obviously, have been pretty, pretty hectic. They've challenged us, and I can honestly say that I have never been more proud to be with an organization from the top down to be providing the service that we do day in, day out. The support from our city manager, from the council, from you, Mr. Mayor, is appreciated throughout, throughout the departments. And as the theme is Ready Today, Preparing for Tomorrow, we are constantly planning, adapting, and then responding to all of these, this new, this new era that we're in. We're working very hard, very proud to be a part of this organization. Our firefighters, paramedics, and EMTs are doing a fantastic job, and we're going to continue to do so. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Quinn. Anyone on the council wish to comment? All right. Chief Quinn, you might want to just comment quickly on our, our preparedness in terms of PPE equipment for all of the folks that work with you, providing our emergency medical services to the residents of our community. Do you think we're in pretty good shape from that standpoint?
I do. I do. We, we kind of got ahead of the bell curve on this with planning and kind of foreseeing what the future was going to bring. And we are, we are set. We're looking pretty good with having enough of our N95s adapters for our SCBA masks. So we've got a couple of options. So we're, we're looking pretty good. I think all of our, of our members are feeling pretty confident that they can go into any call and feel safe and provide the care no matter what the call is.
Good to hear. I think, you know, that, and the chief does as well, Chief Schmitz, that a lot of folks in our community have been concerned about our, our firefighters, our emergency medical services people having adequate PPE resources. And so it's good to hear that we feel like we've got a, a strong inventory of PPE to take us through this COVID-19 pandemic. Chief, anything else?
No.
Chief Quinn, thank you so much for being with us this evening. It's a, it's a pleasure to have you with us and, and give our best to all of the folks that are working with you and for you.
Certainly will. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, chief. All right, we've got one more proclamation, and that involves National Public Works Week. And Brian Olson, our Public Works Director, is with us this evening. And the National Public Works Week proclamation reads as follows, and it is that same time period, May 17 through the 23rd, 2020. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Edina. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals or engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for the well-being of our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children of Edina to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. Whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina does hereby proclaim the week of May 20, May 17 through the 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina. Calls upon all citizens and civic organizations in the City of Edina to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to the, our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
Some move.
Second.
A motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Brindle to adopt the proclamation which declares the week of May 17 through the 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week in the City of Edina. Any further discussion? Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Member Fisher.
Aye.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. The proclamation is approved. And Director Olson, there you are.
Yes.
Thanks to have you with us this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this year's National Public Works Week celebrates the rhythm of public works. This year's national theme challenges our members and our citizens to think about our community as a symphony of essential services, working in concert to create a great place to live. Every community has a rhythm, a heartbeat that reflects its essence and tempo of life. Edina's rhythm is fast-paced with an emphasis on being leaders in the industry, delivering quality public service with integrity at the heart of every decision that we make. We value our communities and the role that public works professionals play in keeping the modern day life safe and functioning smoothly. For the last 60 years, National Public Works Week is designed to increase public awareness of the employees across the nation whose contributions enlighten the public about the duties, practices, and goals of public works professionals. Although we are unable to host the biannual open house this year, we hope that you and the rest of the community joins us in celebrating National Public Works Week. So thank you for reading and approving the proclamation declaring the 17th through the 23rd. Third is National Public Works Week, and for allowing me to represent your public works department along with its employees this evening. I will echo Chief Quinn's pride in working for a community that cares so much for its employees and its residents. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Director Olson. Any comments by any council members?
I just have one, and that is, when do you unveil the, the poster?
Oh, the poster can be put up to City Hall, except that it won't be available to the public because City Hall is still closed. So we, we do have a poster framed at, at Public Works Department, so you can come and see it anytime.
So for those that don't know, every year for this, this week, across the, it's across the country, right, that this poster and theme is created? And for all those folks that come to meetings in the Public Works Building, and you walk down that corridor, you see many of those posters, and it's sort of fun to see that.
But thank you, Member Fisher. Anyone else? Comment, question? Director Olson, thanks for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
And you're doing some terrific work over there. Thank your crew too for all the good work they're doing.
I will.
Yeah, thanks. All right, that takes us through the, that portion of the agenda. We're going to move on to public hearings. We've got two public hearing matters in front of us this evening. As we discussed before the meeting started, consistent with what we did in our last, I think it was a month ago now, we had a public hearing matter that we kept open until the following Wednesday noon, and I think we'll talk about doing that same thing with respect to these two matters that are before us this evening. The first public hearing matter that's before us involves Resolution 2020-49, which is a request for a parking stall variance and a revised final development site plan at 4532 France Avenue. Casey Carl is here for the applicant, but first, if you will hear the presentation by our community services director, community development director, Perry Teague.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This project is located up in the 44th and France Commercial District. The request is for parking stall variance and a revision to a final development plan that was approved a couple of years ago by the city council. Property is located just south of the Gateway Bank, 4532 France. As part of that project approval a couple of years ago, the site was rezoned to planned commercial district, and there was a variance associated with that for parking stalls. This is a look at the building as it was constructed, a rendering. It's a two-story, 2,375 square foot retail and office building. The variance that was approved back in 2018 was for, based on the square footage of the building, 15 stalls were required, and the site plan had 11. So that variance was granted as part of that project. As part of that project, the basement area was designated for a storage, storage space. It was 540 square feet. Since the, the applicant has been in business for the last little over a year or so, they've had plenty of parking. There hasn't been any parking issues. They've been operating at about a 30% capacity. What the request is this evening is to remodel that storage space into office space. Again, it's 540 square feet. This request went before the Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago, and the Planning Commission recommendation was for approval on a nine to zero vote. This request requires the parking stall variance This request requires the parking stall variance from 18 spaces are now required with that expanded office space. And then also a revised final development plan to eliminate that condition that the lower, the lower area needed to be for storage space. So again, staff and the Planning Commission are both recommending approval here. We did have SPAC Solutions did a traffic and parking study, and they did find that, again, they're operating at a 30% capacity and that this increase wouldn't have, with that increase in square footage, wouldn't impact the, the traffic in the area as well. We do have Max Marlin from SPAC Solutions with us who conducted that parking and traffic study. Should you have any questions, but we did find that this is reasonable. There's no changes to the building other than just remodeling that lower level, and they would just utilize those 11 existing parking spaces. So no changes to the site either. But with that, again, staff and the Planning Commission are recommending approval subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in your staff report. With that, I will stop there and answer any questions. Casey Carl, the applicant is on the line with us. Should you have any questions of him?
All right, so I understand that, so it's clear that the requested require the following, a parking stall variance from 18 stalls to 11 stalls. And then they revised site plan to remodel the basement storage space for office use, and that's 540 square feet of storage area.
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And then, so first of all, any questions for Director Teague? And council members? And then, as I understand it, Director Teague, you have indicated to Mr. Carl that you have up to 10 minutes for a presentation?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right.
Who had a question?
Yeah, for Carrie. So there's two more parking stalls that are required as a result of 504 square feet. So do we require six parking stalls per thousand square feet in office? Is that the difference?
It's one stall per 200 square feet.
Okay, so there's 200 plus change.
Right, right. So part of this space is retail, there's retail and office?
Part of the 504 square feet at the basement?
I'm sorry, no, the, yeah, the, the new, the new space is just office.
And, and we, when was the, the 200 square feet per, or one stall for every 200 square feet of office space? Has that been on the books for a long time?
It has. It's been on the books as long as I've been here, and I think it, it probably goes back to the 1980s.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and now before we go to Mr. Carl, any other questions for Director Teague?
I do have one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Really just about handicap parking there. I know that there's only one space dedicated, but it does open up a question about whether or not there might be a less abled, full-time employee there which might make the, the parking for the retail operation if there were a handicapped retail customer who needed access to that space while we have one occupied. It would be a question more than anything else. I wonder, and we can work through in the court, the, of the public hearing, but it does come up for me that we might want to consider adding another space.
Yeah, Member Anderson, that, that is a good question. So that would be, that's reviewed by our building official when they review the building permit to remodel that space. They would take a look at the parking configuration, and if that's a requirement that they feel is necessary, they could, they could put that on at that time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Director Teague? All right, before I turn to Mr. Carl, I just wanted to let folks know that may be listening in. A reminder that if you want to testify regarding this matter, you can call 1-800-374-0221. You enter conference ID number 6494715, 6494715. And then I think as Director Bennerott indicated, you press star one to speak when you're called up in the queue.
Mayor Hovland?
Yes.
This is Communications Director Jennifer Bennerott. The correct number for people to call in tonight is 833-360-0793. The conference number you gave is correct, 6494715. And again, you were correct that they will need to press star one to indicate that they would like to speak after connecting to the conference.
Okay, would you give me that 833 number again, please, and so I can replace what I have here in front of me?
You bet. It's 833-360-0793.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Mr. Carl, welcome.
Yes, Mayor, thank you for having me and City Council, thank you for having me as well. Happy Cinco de Mayo to everyone. I just, I will just speak for just, just a few minutes. I will certainly not take my, my full time. As, as Kerry had said, we were in front of you guys in 2018 for approval for, for the building. As, as part of the development phase, we had originally proposed having our, the, the lower level finished in that because of the traffic and parking study that came back from SPAC the first time, which was using data that was available for the trade area. It was deemed that we needed to, to convert that to storage, which we did. Since we've been open, we've had the luxury, and this was actually a great discussion that took place at Planning Commission, of actually going back with actual data, with actual traffic and actual parking usage. And as Kerry had said, we've been, you know, operating around 30 to 35% utilization of all the existing parking pretty much throughout the entire week, both the, you know, typical business week as well as the weekends, as well as all hours of operations. We then did another parking and traffic study that the SPAC can speak to. And the data did confirm that, you know, the utilization was certainly well below what was originally modeled when we came in front of the, the City Council the first time in 2018. So we feel very confident that with these changes, and then we're great to see that the data actually supports it, that we will have no problem with parking, even with remodeling the, the lower level and the two plus stalls that would be required for that. So. With that said, I think we've had, we had, I think, obviously great support from the, the Planning Commission, and we had great support from a lot of neighbors as well. So we feel really good about that. Other than that, I can answer any and all questions that you have, so.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Let me see if any of the council members have a question for you. Questions by council members at all? All right. Well, the, the building turned out to be a beautiful structure for that neighborhood, I think. So congratulations. You got it built in a hurry.
Well, we certainly, it didn't feel like a hurry when we were building it, but, but we are very pleased with how it turned out. And we've, I appreciate your comments and we've received consistent positive praise for, I think, doing something that felt like it very much fit within the trade area within the neighborhood, so.
I'd say that's right. It, it fits into the neighborhood beautifully.
Yeah, thank you.
So any other comments or questions by council members? Otherwise, we'll open this up for public testimony. In fact, I'll do that right now. This is a public hearing matter. I'm now going to open this up for any public testimony that may come from folks on the line. Again, the correct number, I had the incorrect number before. The correct number is 833-360-0793. And the conference ID number, 6494715. Then you can get in the queue to testify. We're going to hold on because of the delay that we have for a few minutes to see if anybody wants to testify. We'll rely on Director Bennerott to let us know if somebody's coming on the line or if we can.
Mayor Hovland, our first caller tonight is Mark Hoffenstav. Mark, please introduce yourself, giving your full name and street address, and then you can begin your remarks. Operator, please put him through. Drew, his question or his comment. If anyone else would like to speak, please press star one to indicate that you would like to provide testimony. I do see that we have a number of people on the call. So if you're interested in providing testimony in this matter, please press star one now. So far, no one is indicating that they would like to speak.
All right, so I want to have a conversation with the council, and this may be something we wish to do on a uniform basis or a case-by-case basis. When we had the hearing on the Hankerson Avenue proposal for townhouses, we left the matter open for supplemental public testimony until noon of the following Wednesday. And I'm wondering what the, what my colleagues are thinking about relative to that as a general policy during this time when we have to conduct virtual meetings? Or whether we could deal with this on an individual basis and on some occasions, use that policy as we did on Hankerson? Or in some instances, not use that, that policy and just address the matter this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher?
My thought would be, if we have an instance where there is not, you know, we're just not tracking any comment from the public at all in our emails before the meeting or you know, in this case, you know, no public hearing comments. I believe it was the case with the Planning Commission, and then you have a unanimous Planning Commission decision. I don't see the benefit in stretching those issues out, you know, multiple weeks and stacking things up. But I do think it should be our policy where, you know, where we have any sort of public input that we then give that full, open window.
Thank you for those comments. Other council members? Your thoughts relative to what Member Fisher is proposing, that we look at it on a case-by-case basis, or we have some uniform policy? Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I tend to agree with the Member Fisher. On a matter such as this, it looks, it's pretty clear cut, it feels to me in terms of community input or resistance. I haven't seen anything at all, and the, the Planning Commission recommendation, as Member Fisher mentions, is nine to nothing. And so it seems as if it's something we could decide on tonight. But not everyone, yes.
I would agree with that.
Okay. And Member Stoughton, your thoughts? Are you comfortable with that? Kind of case-by-case determination?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mayor Hovland, we do have someone prepared to give testimony right now, if you'd like to take it.
All right, we will take that testimony.
Okay, Robert Cundy, we'll have the operator open your line. If you could begin by please stating your full name and address, and then your three minutes of speaking time will begin. Anyone else who's interested in testifying, please press star one, so we know you'd like to testify?
Hi, my name is Robert Cundy. I live at 4521 Drexel Avenue in the Country Club. As I did at the previous planning meetings with respect to matters similar to this, I'm calling in to support the small area plan for 44th and France as well as the comprehensive plan for the city of Edina. I point out to an earlier question that our parking code was actually written and adopted and has remained unchanged since 1970. So that code, the code by which we evaluate requests like this one and the matter that follows, was written 50 years ago, and I'd offered to the council and to, to the mayor that we can and should, as you have been discussing here so far on this matter, be setting aside this ordinance when it simply doesn't comport with the facts of the matter at hand. The parking study in this case clearly shows that a parking code of 18 spots with a peak usage of five in the SPAC report would result in a more than 70% gap between what our code would require of this developer and what modern parking data and expert analysis deem necessary. I'd also point out that this is consistent with what our small area plan study, the study conducted by BECO Associates found, which is that parking in our district here is disorganized for sure, but that no more than 53% of any businesses dedicated parking in total across the district, at no point during their study were the total sum of lots within this district more than 53% full. I think that study goes a long way in, in highlighting changes in vehicle usage and travel patterns for residents of the city. The small area plan calls out that while the district parking garage should be built to accommodate parking and to allow for concessions like this, that even that garage should be designed so that it can be converted to another use such as like the top level becoming a park. So our documents, our studies, the history of transportation in Edina, particularly with Go Green, reducing our emissions, fully support that, that vehicle usage has just substantively changed since 1970. And we know this, it fits with the larger context of data across the country. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, the organization that accredits organizations like SPAC and BECO, last year released a document in their February 2019 journal titled, "Are Parking Minimums a Thing of the Past?" And I've provided that to you all as, as submittal, and I'll save you the reading. They've said that these codes are antiquated and lead to far more concrete than is necessary in cities like ours. So I appreciate your time, fully support the acceptance of this variance for Mr. Carl. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you still on the line, Robert?
His time is up.
Okay, I was trying to get the spelling of his last name, but maybe Ms. Bennerott got that.
We, we've got it in other settings.
Yeah, all right. Sounds like it. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify in this matter?
I continue to see a number of people on the call, but no one has pressed star one to indicate that they'd like to testify. Again, callers, if you'd like to testify, please press star one, and then we will introduce you. For another minute or so, just to make sure that no one else joins the call.
Thank you, Ms. Bennerott. Anyone further queuing up, Director Bennerott?
I do have one more caller. I don't have a name, though. Operator, will you please put that caller through? And ask that caller to please start by indicating a full name and address? Go ahead, caller whose phone number starts with a 312 area code.
It's Mark Schmidt at 411, it's, it's Mark Schmidt at 411 Sunnyside Road.
Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
I would just like to say that I think the request for this variance is reasonable. The applicant followed the procedures in place, used it as storage space, came back with actual data, and I think that that's a reasonable request under the circumstances for this particular property and a property at this scale. I, I supported in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Director Bennerott, is there anyone else queued up?
No, sir, not at this time. Again, if you'd like to speak, please press star one. Again, if you'd like to speak, please press star one. Move on, sir.
There's no one left in the queue, Mr. Mayor, so we can move on if you want to.
All right, I didn't quite understand that message from her, so thank you for that clarification. All right, we've had a conversation about whether to leave the matter open until Wednesday, May 13. I think the sentiment of the council, the general view of the council was that we could entertain a motion to close the public hearing this evening with respect to this particular matter involving Requested Resolution 2020-49. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in this matter?
So moved.
Motion by Anderson, second by Member Brindle. Motion second to close the public hearing in this matter? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
Hi. In front of us this evening with respect to this particular matter in which we have just closed the public hearing is Resolution 2020-49, which is a resolution that would approve a parking stall variance as described by Director Teague, reducing the stall number from 18 to 11, and also amending the approved final development plan at 4532 France Avenue. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-49?
So moved.
Motion by Member Brindle?
Second.
Second by Member Fisher to adopt Resolution 2020-49. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Ms. Allison?
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
The matter's approved. Resolution 2020-49 is adopted. Mr. Carl, thank you for your attendance this evening and your presentation. And good luck with this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And then our final public hearing this evening involves a property in close proximity to 4532, and that is 4500 France Avenue. Orion Investments has requested the passage of a Resolution 2020-48. It also involves a request for a parking stall variance and revised final development plan at 4500 France Avenue. Director Teague is going to lead us through this matter as well. And then Ted Carlson from Orion Investments is going to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant before we open it up for public testimony. All right, Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property, as mentioned, is just north of the project we just looked at at the intersection of Sunnyside and France Avenue. It is for the project that's currently under construction. As you recall, there's 45 units of housing being constructed over what was approved for a restaurant and retail space. So this is a look at the floor plan that was approved. The restaurant space was intended for this just under 3,600 square foot area. And one of the conditions of the final development plan as part of the PUD was to cap the restaurant seating at 35 seats. That was to, so the remainder of the retail space, just under 3,000 square foot, the 36 parking stalls that are under construction now could support a 35-seat restaurant along with that retail space. What the applicant is proposing is to expand the restaurant to about 3,700 square feet, a little over 3,700 square feet. And within that space, have a 100-seat restaurant. The retail space would be reduced slightly inside. This proposal went before the Planning Commission in February, on February 12. At that time, the restaurant seating proposal was for 110 seats. The Planning Commission recommended denial of that request. But rather than go to the city council with that denial, the applicant has spent the last, oh, month or two, worked, meeting with area residents and area businesses and to try to come up with a plan that addressed some of the Planning Commission concerns. They did take those revisions back to the Planning Commission last week. So what they've done is reduce the restaurant size from 110 seats to 100. They're offering parking available on properties nearby. And my next slide shows where those are. But just quickly, they're at the 44th Street Dental Office. There's 24 stalls there. And the DP Hugh would provide four parking stalls. Then the applicant owns the property to the south, where there's currently 15 stalls there today. They would direct restaurant patrons to use additional parking stalls via the restaurant website. They would provide directional maps at the hostess stand. They would use signage within that parking area, once constructed, to direct potential customers to those additional parking areas. And they would use neighborhood associations to provide that, get that word out as well. The restaurant workforce itself would not exceed 10 employees, and they'd be instructed to walk, use ride-share, public transportation to reduce the parking demands on that lot on their site. They've also agreed to construct or do some type of improvements along Sunnyside, potentially could be a crosswalk or an upgrade of the intersection adjacent to the site. It would work with staff and the Transportation Commission on what that would be, but they've pledged $7,500 toward those improvements. They've also stated that they would redesign the parking entrance to eliminate the left turn out onto Sunnyside. Council may recall that there was a lot of discussion about preventing that left turn out. So here is a look at those parking availability. Here's the dental office along 44th. So if customers were to park there, they could go through the public alley to access the site. Or they could walk to France and to the restaurant. This is the DP Hugh site. And then immediately to the south, the applicant owns this property, and there are 15 stalls that could be made available in the evening. There is also the availability or the potential to add four stalls within this site. There was a proof-of-parking arrangement when the Gateway Bank project was approved, where they could add an additional four stalls. So what the applicant is requesting here is a parking stall variance from 61 spaces that's required under our code to 36 spaces proposed. So they're 25 stalls short. And also a revision of the final development plan that would allow a 100-seat restaurant instead of a 35-seat. So similar to that last request, an amendment to the final development plan as part of the PUD. SPAC Solutions also was the parking and traffic consultant for this project that the city used. The conclusion of their study is that they see the restaurant and the retail space would max out at 53 vehicles. So they're saying at the max occupancy of the restaurant, they would be short 17 stalls, whereas the city code requirement says that they're short parked by 25 stalls. Using that property to the south, owned by the applicant, they have the ability for 15 to 19 available stalls. It could be made available for this project. The applicant has provided a couple of one-year leases on their property to the south and the dental clinic to provide that additional parking. So primary issue for consideration are the findings for a variance met. In this case, a case can be made for both approval and denial. And staff has outlined that, those two options within your staff report. In this case, the recommendations that are coming to the city council are mixed. The Planning Commission reversed their earlier decision and is recommending approval of the variances and the amended final development plan on a vote of five to two. Staff is, however, recommending denial, as with the original request. As noted in the resolution, the Planning Commission's findings, they were comfortable with the shared parking agreements and the work that the applicant has done to provide those pedestrian improvements, the $7,500 donation, the no-left turn, the signage. They believe that they've done enough mitigation to grant the variance. The staff recommendation for denial is really based on that there are no long-term binding agreements that can guarantee that the city, that additional 17 to 25 cars, well, 17 according to the traffic study, wouldn't spill out into the roadways. If the city had a binding, long-term agreement, that there would be assurances that those 17 additional cars wouldn't spill out into the street, staff may have a different recommendation. But the city has not used on-street parking to satisfy parking shortages in the past. Also want to mention that the 36 spaces that are being constructed within this development as part of the PUD, they did agree to put an easement over all 36 stalls to be available for district parking. So to utilize that parking lot and with a use that is going to generate more parking, puts more stress on that district. So with that, again, staff is recommending denial of the request subject to the findings outlined in the resolution. And the Planning Commission is recommending approval, subject to their findings and conditions. And with that, I can stop there and answer any questions. Oh, and again, Max Marlin from SPAC Solutions is here to answer any questions that you may have in regard to both the parking and the traffic.
Question?
Questions from Director Teague, Member Brindle?
Thank you. I want to rewind about two sentences. Because I thought you said staff was recommending approval at the end of your presentation. And I thought staff was recommending denial.
I'm sorry if I did say that. Staff is recommending denial, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I'm sure it was me who misunderstood. Thank you.
Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? All right. We have Mr. Carlson with us. Did you indicate to Mr. Carlson, Director Teague, how much time he would have for his presentation?
Yes, about 15 minutes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Carlson? There he is. Welcome, Mr. Carlson. We're still not hearing you, Mr. Carlson. You're, we're ready for your presentation. Mr. Carlson, can you hear me at all? Mr. Carlson?
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Okay.
And you can hear me as well?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, you can go ahead and proceed, Mr. Carlson.
Great. Mr. Mayor, council, and staff, thank you for the opportunity to present this to you tonight. As you know, it's been an interesting road to bring this project to fruition, and we're happy that we're nearing completion. We're hopeful that August 1st, we can start delivering units to residents. You know, there's been a lot of consternation about this. And frankly, we're here to talk about positives and present solutions tonight. So I want to talk about why we're doing this. And frankly, it's part of us delivering on a promise to a lot of our supporters during the initial entitlement period to deliver a neighborhood restaurant. We've heard that over and over throughout the meetings that we conducted. We passed on different banking uses, two different dental uses, and a medical use belief that this neighborhood restaurant would fit very well within the goals and objectives of what we set out to do several years ago. In February, we learned from the Planning Commission what some of the objections were, and we started a conversation to get better. And so with that, I'm going to see if I can screen share. And hold on one second. Can you see my screen now?
You are.
Okay, great, thank you. So on March 9th, we conducted a neighborhood meeting, and we had almost 30 residents in attendance. And we talked about how do we get better? And we get better by shrinking the restaurant size. So we're down to, we're down by about 10% from 110 to 100 seats. Parking's a concern, so we've got 43 stalls with signed lease agreements. And then the safety was a concern. And so we said, well, we can help fund different improvements, whether that's existing infrastructure or the crosswalk. At the city's request, we can eliminate the left-out from the public park and out of the Sunnyside Road. We've got signage designed to attract patrons with no parking in the neighborhood to be used as part of the parking area. And we talked about how restaurant deliveries are piggybacked on deliveries to existing area restaurants. Wanted to point out what used to be here, the project will be in the future. We used to have a wide, somewhat challenging entrance to Edina cleaners or retail patrons, where we'd get crossing traffic with really no public kind of benefits or elements. Furthermore, here, we had an extra-wide situation that we didn't care for. This is the final project, as shown and talked about, with one curb cut along Sunnyside and serve the on-street parking, will create what we believe is a very pedestrian-friendly atmosphere. This is an aerial view looking south down France. This was flown three days before this Shelter-in-Place Act was issued by Governor Walz. We've got 15 surface stalls here on our Edina Gateway project. We can eliminate the green space here to create four more stalls. And in fact, our parking agreement with the city from 2016, when we were approved for 20% less surface stalls than was required, gives the city the opportunity to put those stalls to us, should they be required. And we have 90 days to install those four different stalls. We show 10 on-street stalls parking here in Minneapolis. We've served at least seven on-street stalls on Sunnyside. Should also note that the main entrance to the restaurant is designed to be right here on France Avenue. Here's an aerial looking northbound on France, where we've got 15 on-street stalls along the Minneapolis side, 24 surface stalls here with Dr. Beaker, and 18 on-street stalls on and around kind of the triangle piece on the Minneapolis side of France Avenue. Again, this is drone imagery flown on Saturday, March 14. Lastly, I wanted to show what we kind of show for convenient, easily accessible parking that excludes Sunnyside Road. Because frankly, we don't want to have a parking issue any more than the residents do. We've got 36 parking stalls at Orion. We can do 15 up to 19 stalls adjacent to Edina Gateway. We've got four parking stalls at DP Hugh. 24 parking stalls at 44th Street Dental, for a total of 79 on-street stalls. Got four parking stalls at DPU, twenty-four parking stalls at Forty-Fourth Street Dental, for a total of seventy-nine on-street stalls. We also, if you just look at the on-street stalls, not on Sunnyside, which are really in Minneapolis, we've got an additional thirty-five on-street stalls within a one-block area. So by our count, we've got access to a hundred and fourteen different parking stalls that are not on Sunnyside Road. So on the theme of coming up with dialogue ideas and solutions, where we can bring a neighborhood restaurant to life on this floor, we wanted to talk about different ideas that we've got. First of all, we've shared all the different property owners' contact information with staff so that there's an opportunity to explore longer-term solutions for the city. They've got those contacts. Secondly, we're more than willing to add the four parking stalls at the Dyna Gateway. Clearly, we've ensured with our restaurant operator that the main entrance to the restaurant is along France Avenue. Fourthly, we can try to lease more stalls and additional parking lots in the area. Fifth, we can come up with longer-term leases, especially with our project to the south, the Dyna Gateway, that we plan on owning for long term. And lastly, we can mandate that employees of the restaurant park off-site or use ride-share within the lease agreement with our restaurant tour. You know, this is our third redevelopment project within the city of Edina. And all three of the sites have been old, tired and contaminated sites that are fraught with not only sometimes entitlement challenges but other construction challenges. And the reason we've taken those on is we want to see a better edina. And we focus really on a livable city goal that talks about connected and sustainable development. So each of these developments, whether it's a Dyna Gateway in the Lorient that we're talking about tonight, or the Caribou Project on Vernon and Interlock, is really focused on sustainability and connectivity. And literally, our variance request today is connected with the property that we're fortunate to own next door. So we can use that infrastructure to help support more sustainable and better development. So, we're here to stand for ideas and questions and I look forward to further conversation and I'll wait feedback from you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Does anyone on the council have a question for Mr. Carlson or comment with regard to any portion of his presentation?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Anderson.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Carlson, you, you mentioned piggybacking. I think in your presentation, the restaurant pickup and piggybacking that with other pickups. And how would, how would you arrange that? How would that be guaranteed?
Well, you know, our restaurant tour unfortunately is not able to join us tonight. But there's, there's two major food delivery services within the Twin Cities. And there's already China Grill or Great Wall of China, Old Southern Barbecue, Convention Grill, Hello Pizza, Brugers, Caribou, Melio's and others. So, it's been very strongly represented that those trucks are on the same routes and that those deliveries happen at the same time for the sake of efficiency and lower cost of goods and pressure products.
Okay. Also, the adjacent spaces at Gateway, you've got fifteen there, potential of nineteen, I guess.
That's it.
Yeah. So, so those fifteen, could you just describe a little more fully about the, the parking permit arrangement there? Right now, I think you proposed a year. Are you thinking about anything beyond that or how would you, how would you do that?
Yeah, we would certainly be willing to provide three years and possibly a five-year lease agreement. And we, if it's, you know, can add the four additional stalls or frankly, the city, as part of our development agreement on that site, can force us to add the four stalls. Our mindset is that we prefer the green space, but if more asphalt is desired or needed, we're willing to do it.
Just, I'm just asking. Yeah, I think the green space is ideal. So, but, but if you needed those four to get to nineteen, that's really what you control right now. All the rest of them are really kind of out of your control, other than the, the one-year arrangement with Dr. Beaker. That's accurate.
That is accurate.
Uh-huh, okay. That's, that's all I have for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher.
Councilmember Anderson made me think of something. So, those nine, fifteen or nineteen spots are the ones that you could control most easily with a longer-term lease. What would, what's a typical lease? And if you can't answer it, don't, but, but for a restaurant space like you're working with here, I mean, how, how far out is that typically going? And, and what's, I'm just trying to get to what sort of gaps might we have in what, what you can assure the city in terms of parking solutions?
Great question, thank you. And frankly, Director Teague and I worked to try to figure out how do we, how do we bridge not only a gap now but into the future because two things we think are happening. Number one, people are changing the way that they drive. And number two, you know, there may be other parking solutions in the future. So frankly, Mr. Fisher, restaurant leases are typically seven to ten years long. So, that I think is simple gist of your question and a simple answer.
Right, thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Carlson? Mr. Carlson, could you speak to the issue that Director Teague raised? And that is that you've got thirty-six existing onsite parking stalls planned when the building is complete, but it's going to be used for a combination of purposes. It's been committed to district-wide parking availability. So, how do you, how do you solve the issue of that, those spaces being used for multiple purposes, all of which maybe shouldn't be counted as being available for restaurant use in the evening hours? How did, how did that sort of challenge go into your, your computations for what you would need for parking here for the restaurant only?
Thank you. That's a great question. And I first think I do believe that the city has different accounting, different methodologies for accounting for different uses. Or maybe Director Teague can address that after me. Frankly, I think we look at our retail tenants next door who close at, at five PM and one of them is open until seven PM and one's open until six PM. And at seven PM, tenant is only open one day a week. I think frankly, it's best practice for retail, retail operations to have uses that are complementary and that they're not all busy at the same time.
And, and I thought I heard you mention in response to one of the questions or comment earlier that you made that with respect to your neighbors to the north, whether it's Convention Grill, what does have some parking available, but Hello Pizza, Brugers, they don't have any parking available for them other than on-street parking? And then their customers would be able to use your district-wide parking in the evening hours or actually during any time of the day? Is that, is that correct?
I think you're absolutely right. And I, it's, I believe it's limited between midnight and four AM for security purposes. But other than that, those stalls are, yes, readily available. And I think that the, you know, part of what we looked at was the consultant from Bob Smith, and I forget the company's with, and the Morningside Neighborhood Survey, which was, which were completed in twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen, before this redevelopment started. And each cases in the Morningside Study, it was found that parking is not a concern. And in Bob Smith's report, it found that only fifty-three percent of the stalls were ever utilized at one time in those different area of business.
All right. Well, I, I think the fact that you pulled this matter back in February and decided to have a meeting with the neighborhood to talk about the problem tells me that you've got some sensitivity to the same thing I think everybody on the council has sensitivity to, to. And that is that you don't want parking seeping into the neighborhood and hence the No Red Cow signs that proliferated on, on Sunnyside Road. How do you think, yeah, so, so you tried to deal with it in your way. Why do you think the council ought to have confidence in what you're suggesting? That there won't be people seeping down into Sunnyside Road for parking purposes? And that your methodology will be sufficient to meet your parking needs? Because it's, it's hard to imagine that somebody would park over at Forty-Fourth Street Dental and then walk down the alley to come over to the restaurant. I can see it next door where you've got Gateway Bank and you can meet part of your parking requirements there. I think just like at the Red Cow, if they want to use that for an example, at night, you see people parking at the Wallet Bakery Lot. But still, there's a lot of traffic, a lot of cars parked on the street over there, the side street where the cow is. What's the, what, what kind of assurances can you really bring to the neighborhood? That there won't be this seepage into, into the neighborhood of people wanting to dine at a good restaurant? And, and deciding that the closest place for them to park is right on Sunnyside Road and then walk back up to the restaurant?
Well, thank you for the question. I appreciate the candor. You know, it's both kind of data-driven and practicality-driven. First of all, we're four and a half to five times better parked than Red Cow. Secondly, we will have forty-four apartment units, of which one is a guest suite with residents living above this project. So, we do not want to create a poor experience for those residents. Thirdly, from a dining and patron and user experience perspective, having a parking problem at a restaurant does not create an enjoyable experience and is likely to have a restaurant misfired, which we either read or our restaurant operator form. So specifically, as it relates to the Forty-Fourth Street Dental stalls, those are great stalls for A, staff, or B, valet parking, should that ever be required.
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point. Because I, I think a lot of folks can see that there would be nice value in having a really first-rate restaurant operator in that neighborhood. You think about some of the restaurants that people love the most in our part of town. They're up in Linden Hills or they're over on Penn Avenue South. They're in, they're in these neighborhood nodes. It seems like that, you know, those are the restaurants people appreciate. But on the other hand, that, that desire for a nice neighborhood restaurant gets balanced against the, the risks of having people moving into the neighborhood to park, to go to that restaurant. And that's what gives, I think, folks justifiably so angst over on Sunnyside. I'm not sure it is as good an effort as you've made here that we've got the problem solved. But nonetheless, I've really appreciated the effort that you've gone through. And we'll, we'll talk about it in more detail. But tell me why you think overall that your idea comparts with the small-area plan for Forty-Fourth and France? Because that's a factor too, I think.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think that what, what we relied on in our original entitlements was to really pursue alignment with the small-area plan. And that small-area plan in certain areas is directly conflicting with some of the different codes and ordinances, which are fifty-plus years old. So, you know, when we talk about, I think there's twelve different things that we talked about during our entitlement process. And we tried to bring those things to light. And I think in another thirty to sixty days, as the exterior is finished, that vision will be proved. As you can see, I believe we're building a very high-quality project in a high-quality corner in a very high-profile city. So, you know, we're focused on alignment with the small-area plan to bring walkability, pedestrian safety, an area of community and gathering. And then when I look back at the data, Mayor Hovland, is just on the surface, if we have a hundred-seat restaurant and are providing fifty-five parking stalls in immediate adjacency without any demands on on-street parking, and then furthermore, have immediate adjacent on-street parking in the city of Minneapolis across the street with uses that are generally not very active after seven PM, I think the risk is very low. And add in the fact too, that we are very concerned about maintaining a positive resident experience for the forty-four new members of that community. I think, you know, our interests are very aligned with the neighbors. And so frankly, we've worked to find solutions. We believe that we've delivered them to the absolute best of our ability. And you know what? It's a perfect null. But in this case, we believe it's very good.
Okay, good. Would you remind me again of the number of on-street parking locations or stalls on, on France Avenue or on the Minneapolis side? Was it twenty-five?
Is this visible?
Yeah, we have. That's up on the screen. No, actually, it's thirty-five, huh? The east side of France Avenue, Sunnyside to Forty-Sixth. Okay.
You've got the stalls down France Avenue from Sunnyside to Forty-Sixth and then include France and Newing, both sides, north and south of the street, which is directly east from the front door of our restaurant. Almost perfectly aligned, we've got thirty-five on-stalls, on-street stalls that are not in Edina.
Okay, all right, thank you. Did that prompt any other questions by council members or either Mr. Carlson or Director Teague? All right. This is a public hearing matter. I think Director Benarott is monitoring the call-in line for testimony. And we'll now open the matter up for public testimony. And a reminder, you'll have three minutes. And also, if you are listening and want to call in and can't remember what the number was, it is eight-three-three-three-six-zero-zero-seven-nine-three. The conference ID number is six-four-nine-four-seven-one-five. And then you press star one to speak. So, Director Benarott?
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm wondering if it would be appropriate for Max Morland from Ospac to weigh in? Because I trust his data and he found similar, I think he has similar findings with our site and Mr. Carl's site adjacent. Or should that come later? I don't know. I just, we've had a lot of dialogue.
Well, it can come in now, part of your presentation.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Max Morland. We were hired by the city of Edina to do a parking assessment for forty-five hundred France. I'm going to share my screen here. So I'll just run through our study here in a couple of minutes. The site's proposing seventy-seven residential and thirty-six commercial parking stalls. Based on parking demand forecasts, we estimate the peak parking demand to be sixty spaces for residential and fifty-three for commercial. That means the parking demand for the residential portion of the site should sit within the supply. The compared, as discussed, the commercial parking demand, which consists of the retail plus restaurants, is forecast to exceed those thirty-six spaces. And there are those fifteen spaces to the south as well as additional off-street spaces that are available. Focusing on the commercial portion of the site and looking at the weekday parking demand for the commercial portion, we can see here the anticipated parking demand over the course of the day. The vertical bars represent the parking demand with the white being for retail and the blue for a one-hundred-seat restaurant. The solid horizontal line represents the thirty-six parking spaces onsite for commercial use. It can be seen that there are two hours on a weekday where demand is forecast to exceed those thirty-six spaces. The dash line represents the additional fifteen spaces in the adjacent Edina Gateway parking lot. With those extra spaces, there's one hour at seven PM where we'd anticipate needing two extra parking spaces. The dotted line there represents the additional spaces available at the DPU and Forty-Fourth Street Dental sites. And with those extra spaces, the parking demand from this site can be easily handled off-street. The next two sides are similar to that one, but they focus on Friday and Saturday. Can be seen on Friday and Saturday, there would be more times that the thirty-six on-street spaces would be, onsite spaces would be full. Three hours as compared to two, but the peak demand should be fully accommodated within the, the extra fifteen spaces from the Gateway Lot. Just to touch on traffic real quick, I know that's going to come up again. We did a full traffic study for the site in twenty-eighteen, part of the original development. That study showed the intersections on France between Forty-Fourth and Forty-Fifth, as well as Sunnyside and Forty-Fourth, will operate with acceptable traffic engineering, within acceptable traffic engineering standards with the addition of traffic from the sites. And you can see here the daily weekday vehicle volumes going through the intersections around the development that we gathered as part of that study. It also included in the orange box, the forecast daily trips that are anticipated at this site, which includes apartments, retail and a hundred-seat restaurant. I'll note that our twenty-eighteen study analyzed the site as having a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant. In our updated assessment, we calculated the number of trips that would be generated by a thirty-seven-hundred-square-foot restaurant versus a one-hundred-seat restaurant, and the difference was very small. and the difference was very small, about ten trips a day. So, therefore, with a one-hundred-seat restaurant, the conclusions of our 2018 traffic study stay the same, in that the intersections will have acceptable operations. Daily traffic will increase, but as shown by these numbers here, the increase will be about four percent at these intersections. So, it's not enough to cause any significant operational issues from our study. So, thank you. I can take any questions, if there are any.
Anyone on the council have a question for Max?
May I ask a question?
Go ahead, Mr. Carlson.
Thank you very much. Max, you know, in the comprehensive plan, parking ratios and mixed-use developments are sometimes adjusted to account for residents of the building and/or surrounding area who won't be driving to the restaurant, but might be referred to as an internal capture rate. Is that internal capture rate included within the fifty-three parking stall count, or does that number get reduced?
No, we didn't do any additional internal or pedestrian or bicycle or transit reductions. So, those very well could happen. That would tick the numbers down by a few percentage points there.
So, this assumes that every patron drives from off-site and parks the restaurant?
Not exactly. These numbers are based on counts at different restaurants, using the Institute of Transportation Engineers' national database, as well as counts we've collected at restaurants in the Twin Cities area. And just based on the size of those restaurants, we can kind of find a rate. And so, naturally, that includes some walking and transit, but typically, it's mostly driving.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, prompt any supplemental questions. Member Sutton?
This is... Going back to the previous issue where we had somebody on the line talking about, and they're correct, you know, our parking standards and codes are at least fifty years old. Max, you talked about, you know, where you get your data or your standards from. I'm assuming those are updated constantly. And what are you, can you speak to this issue of what you're seeing out there in other communities and in terms of what's being required for parking, like for commercial or restaurant-type spaces?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, the data we get is updated every few years. So, it's newer generally than city parking codes. And every city has different codes. But in general, what we're finding is those codes are generally conservative in kind of suburban, twin cities areas. And I know that's in studies we've done, and in a lot of different cities, this topic comes up at city meetings, where the idea to review the city parking codes is brought up. So, I think Edina is kind of in a similar boat as a lot of surrounding cities, as the codes are a bit older and generally on the conservative side.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Jim.
Yes, Member Rendell.
Thank you. The variable that's kind of nagging at me is that there are thirty-six parking stalls in the building itself, and they are available for district parking. So, the most convenient parking to the restaurant is open to district parking. On a rainy day, I can imagine that people are going to prefer to park in that location. So, how does Max, in your, in your parking study, where you're counting those thirty-six parking places among those that are available to the restaurant, how did you factor in the fact that those are district parking spaces?
Yeah, great question. So, we kind of looked at it as a net hole for parking in the area. Typically, a parking lot by itself doesn't draw new cars to the area, but it could cause, like you mentioned, some people who are already parking in the area to now park in this parking lot. So, folks that they're already parking on Sunnyside, some of them might go into the parking lot to have that covered space. So, as a net change, we, anyone who now moves into that parking lot, that will free up spaces elsewhere in the district, because the parking lot alone will not bring people, just because I hear there's free parking at a building in Edina, I'm not going to drive to Edina just to park there unless I'm already going to that area for something else. So, we kind of saw it as no net change to the already parked cars in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Max, as a follow-on to Member Fisher's question, is the code requirement for parking at Forty Fourth and France the same as what we require at Southdale Mall?
I think part of it was different. That might be a better question for Mr. Teague, because I know I kind of go by, he kind of guides me on if I get the code readings right or wrong. But since this has retail, residential, and restaurant, part of it was different, but part of it was the same. I would have to look that up.
All right. Let me ask you another question. There was a gentleman that called in on the other public hearing we had and said that the small area plan study revealed at least the traffic part of it, the travel management part of it, that not more than, or the parking part of it, that not more than fifty-three percent of the available parking was presently being used at the, in the study area at Forty Fourth and France. Can you verify whether that was an accurate representation or not?
I have not read that study, but we did do the parking study for Forty-Five Thirty-Two France, and for that one particular building, they are at less than fifty percent parking demand to capacity.
But the traffic study that was done for the district is part of the small area plan. You can't comment on that?
No, I couldn't say on that right now.
Director Teague, you have any insight on that?
Yeah, I don't have that study in front of me. I believe that it is, it was something similar to that. That said, those are private parking stalls throughout the district, but they looked at it as a whole. But I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
And what about the issue of whether the parking requirements at Forty Fourth and France are the same or similar to what we would require for a large, big-box retailer or like Target or a mall operator like Simon?
Yeah, there are some slight differences where we're looking at a large shopping center. So, they are slightly different. We do take restaurants into consideration, but in a little different way.
All right. That prompt any further inquiries by council members? All right, then we will move on to public testimony. I'm going to open this up for public hearing purposes, and we're going to take testimony from the general public on the issue whether or not this resolution should be approved. And then we'll have a discussion, I think, before we end our conversation in this matter for the evening as to whether or not we want to leave this matter open for further supplemental testimony by the public until the thirteenth of May at noon. And then we would take it up for decision on the nineteenth. So, let's open up those lines for public testimony, public participation. And Director Benarott, we'll turn it over to you to monitor that presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Hugland. We do have several people on the line and a handful of people queued up. Again, any caller who would like to provide testimony in this matter, please press star one to get in the queue to speak with the council. Our first caller tonight is Susan Peterson. Operator, if you would please open Susan's line. Susan, please begin by stating your full name and street address.
Susan Peterson, four-zero-six-zero, Sunnyside Road. I'm asking the city council to deny this variance, and I want council members to remember what was said at their October second, 2018 meeting, when they discussed parking and wound up limiting the number of restaurant seats at this development to thirty-five. Here is a direct quote from Mary Brendel at that meeting. "The balance for how many seats are in the restaurant is the number of parking spaces. It isn't that we're going to have a restaurant with seventy-five seats and find the parking. That's not how this works," unquote. Other council members agreed. She reminded council members that when Hello Pizza came to the city with plans for its place on Sunnyside, the city said it had to remove a couple seats because it didn't have enough onsite parking. Imagine that, a small pizza place where a large part of its business is takeout, and customers buy pizza by the slice. It's a prototype of the kind of business people walk to, with many of its customers' kids who are too young to drive. But the city was scrupulous in applying its parking rules and told Hello Pizza the seats had to be removed. Mary Brendel also said these same standards would need to apply to any future development in the Forty Fourth and France area. She gave the example of the old Lynn Hoff photo building and its small parking lot, saying that any plans for a new, larger building there would have to include sufficient onsite parking. Not parking in some leased spots across the street or a couple blocks away or around the corner, but onsite parking. She said that is how the city's parking ordinances are supposed to work. The developer and his supporters argue that these ordinances are outdated, but you don't ignore or change an ordinance on the fly. There's a process for updating them, and you have to thoughtfully consider the views of people on all sides. There is no consensus that this ordinance is outdated, and that should not be used as an excuse. If you approve this variance, you will be departing from the ordinance you applied to Hello Pizza right across the street, giving preferential business to this other one over another with no good reason. And you will be setting a dangerous precedent for any future redevelopment in the Morningside area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Mr. Benarott?
Next, we have Ed Mathi. Ed, please go ahead by starting with your full name and address. Operator, please put him through.
Hello, this is Ed Mathi. I've lived in the Morningside neighborhood for twenty-eight years. I live at forty-eleven Tipling Avenue right now. Before that, I was at four-two-three-nine Grimes. And before that, I was at forty-fifteen Sunnyside for nine years, just down the street from this development. Anybody who goes in that area and acts as if the on-street parking is available and should be counted for this development has spent no time there. Those are full all the time on the street. There's already a parking problem. And so, the idea of shoehorning more parking into this area is outside of consideration. I would also echo the comments of the previous caller, that it's disappointing as a resident to have to spend this time coming to yet another meeting to say yet again the same thing, that in the past, when we set a rule and we set a standard that the people are supposed to live by in terms of how many seats in restaurants or how they count parking, that in later meetings, we go ahead and disregard it. It forces residents to feel like they're not listened to. Or their other option is that they have to go and listen to every single meeting and contribute in every single meeting to avoid something getting snuck through on a meeting they didn't attend. So, I'm disappointed that this continues to be an ongoing problem rather than sticking to what the council's talked in the past and holding people to a consistent rule. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reckie.
Again, we do have several people on the call. If you'd like to be placed in the queue, please press star one so that we know you'd like to speak. Next up, we have Ben. Ben, will you please begin by stating your full name, including your last name and your address, and then begin your three minutes?
Absolutely. My name is Ben Brieshof, forty-four oh six, Grimes Avenue South. My wife, baby daughter, and myself are new residents, actually, in the area. It was just this last year, and we're drawn. One of the main reasons we came was because we were drawn by the many amenities here at our doorstep. And so, how exciting to have this full-service, locally-owned and authentic restaurant being proposed just a few blocks from us, short walk-in distance. We believe it's going to be a tremendous amenity to the area and are therefore in support of the variance. Personally, we don't feel that parking is an issue. We've heard from the developer, there's thirty-six stalls onsite, fifteen adjacent stalls, that's not including anything on the street. My math serves me pretty well to say that that's fifty-one stalls. If you assume two people per car, that's a hundred and two people for a hundred-seat restaurant, even at the very, very busiest of times. We ourselves, you know, living three blocks away, will walk to the restaurant. We walk by this property all the time. And there's been numbers mentioned that Convention Grill estimates twenty-five percent of their foot, of their traffic is on foot, so we can reasonably assume that ourselves, obviously, and many other locals, will be arriving without a car, which would result in a net positive for available parking. We do have a toddler, and very much appreciate the traffic mitigation efforts that have been proposed. The left turn on the Sunnyside, I think, is a very, very big positive. The crosswalk as well. This shows that Orion Investments is working with the community to make a win-win situation for all involved. And perhaps most important of all, I guess I can't understate this, is the fact that this is an opportunity for the community to gain a wonderful community gathering place. I've noticed even in the plans, there's going to be a green space on the side of the building. We do not want just another thirty-five-seat quick-serve restaurant, a chain store, a bank, or the like. This we see time and time again, going up in new retail spaces, new buildings, and would tremendously detract from the quality of life, the charm or standards of the neighborhood. That's not why we moved here, to have just another chain type of establishment pop up. So, in closing, we're in favor of the hundred-seat, authentic, full-service restaurant, and hope that you vote in favor of this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brieshof.
Okay, I'm mixing up my marks here. I think Mark Ailing has already spoken, I think. So, Mark Schmidt, will you please begin with your full name and address? Operator, please put him through.
They haven't put me through.
Are you?
I can't hear you, Mr. Schmidt.
There, okay. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I hadn't been put through. Am I on now? This is Mark Schmidt at forty-eleven Sunnyside.
You're, you're...
Okay, thank you. Tonight isn't just about a restaurant. Orion can build a restaurant right now and has permission to do so. There are plenty of great neighborhood restaurants in this area with less than fifty seats, like Tilia, Grand Cafe, Zumbro, and many more, and they are full service. Instead of building the restaurant that is allowed, we are instead here again today in yet another hearing in the ongoing saga of Orion versus the Edina zoning laws. Does the city want to give Orion even more? Here's just a highlight list of things the city has given to Orion. The area was zoned for one-to-two-story buildings. City ignored that law and let Orion build a four-story building. The area didn't allow this apartment density, but Orion got to build much denser anyway. Orion gets to pass off the Lorian's outdoor lawn, a classic apartment-building amenity, as a public park. And Orion gets TIF money. And two lots of this parcel were zoned originally as single-family and occupied as single-family homes for nearly a century. But Orion was allowed to rezone those homes and knock them down to build its apartment complex. And now the city publications I received tout the Lorian project by referring to those homes as having been vacant, as if we lived on some blighted block. That's gross. You can't simply rewrite history. It was the city's zoning gift to Orion that led the occupants selling those homes and this home getting bulldozed. They weren't vacant homes. And we, the neighbors, whose block literally has been shipped away, home by home, by the city's prior votes on this project, are supposed to smilingly participate in this process when Orion is here asking for yet another free pass on our zoning law. The zoning laws apply to us, and they should apply to Orion, too. They exist to protect us from development run amok. However, when Orion doesn't want to follow the zoning law, it's encouraged to host yet another community meeting. I'm tired of attending those community meetings hosted by Orion. The inevitable outcome is Orion coming back here and telling you that the issue is something other than what it is. And so, here we are again tonight. You're being told the issue is that the neighborhood wants a restaurant. That's not the issue. Orion is able to build a restaurant today without a variance. You're being told that the neighbors are concerned about safety, so Orion... You're being told that the neighbors are concerned about safety, so Orion offers a couple of softballs, a crosswalk and a traffic sign, as if that will stop all the additional cars from cruising the streets, flying in and out of our driveways, to turn around when they don't have anywhere to park. No matter how you cut it, tripling the restaurant size and excusing twenty-five parking spots will harm our safety and peace. We have zoning laws precisely to protect small areas of the community, whether it be your home or your neighborhood, from the majority making bad decisions simply because it doesn't affect that majority directly. Many of you may want a huge restaurant, but we have zoning laws so that it cannot simply be placed willy-nilly without sufficient protections for those living nearby. If you vote yes, you're violating that social and legal compact and might as well throw out the whole zoning law as no one should feel it means anything if this project has given yet another zoning gift. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt.
Okay, our next caller, I do not have a name for, but it is a caller whose phone number ends in the numbers eight-zero-four. Uh, the operator will open your line. If that's you, please begin by stating your full name and address. Thank you. Your phone number ends-
Hello?
Go ahead, please state your full name and address.
My name is Laura Keegan. I live at four-zero-five-eight Sunnyside Road. And we live about two and a half blocks away from the restaurant, or the restaurant, the Orion Project. And you've already received my written comments. I want to add that we love a restaurant, a thirty-six-seat restaurant. This is simply, there's just simply not enough parking for a hundred-seat restaurant. Everyone knows that people park where it's closest and easiest. And they're more concerned with getting to their, their reservations, what they're going to order, meeting friends. They're not thinking about how they can have less impact by parking somewhere that's going to interfere with residents. When we went to Tinto Kitchen to try out the restaurant on a Saturday afternoon at about four o'clock during happy hour, there was nowhere to park. We had to park on the resident streets, too. We felt terrible doing it, but there's simply nowhere to park. We were shocked that there was a restaurant allowed in Minneapolis that had only, she had about six, I think, six, um, spots in her parking lot for her restaurant. And it, she relied completely on, on, uh, resident streets. So I imagine the same thing's going to happen here. Um, we're extremely, we have an extremely heavy amount of bikes on this block. There are kids on bikes, people, it's just constantly. There's no provision and the city has not answered the call for more safety for all the bicycles that go down that. Circling and looking for parking can be dangerous. And, um, if the city allows the developer to agree on a deal, accept TIF funding of two-point-two million dollars, then come back for a better deal a two mu- a few months before completion, then the city of Edina has completely lost the integrity of their planning and approval process. As Mark said, you might as well just throw it out the window. This process will always be compromised and no resident or neighborhood association will ever trust this process again. Why would they, knowing that a deal is not really a deal? Please deny the variance. And I would like to add that the give that, um, we supposedly are getting, like the no-left, uh, the, the no-left turn out of the parking garage is nothing. They can just go and turn right around in the Convention Grill parking lot. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Keegan.
Um, next we- Next, we have Mark Hovinstav again. Uh, Mark, please go ahead by starting with your full name and address.
Hi, everyone, uh, that's Mark Hovinstav, and I am at forty-five-hundred Moreland, uh, just a little southwest of, uh, the Forty-Fourth and France development area. I think, uh, my opinion is for, uh, this restaurant. Couple of reasons, mostly that it's like an evolution, the way I see it. A lot of, um, restaurants being thirty-five seats, hundred seats, seventy seats, whatever it may be, are busy and, um, you know, it's important and a vibrant city of the neighborhood. I, my mind goes to Pizzero, one of our favorite places to go. And all the, the times I go there, you always kind of have to drive and circle and find a spot. You know, a little inconvenient certainly, but, uh, certainly a fun outing for us. As well as a, a mathematical, uh, approach to this issue. So I think about the twenty-five, uh, spots necessary of the variance. I'm looking at about four-hundred feet. And even if, uh, the, the parking would have to stretch out onto Forty-Fourth Street, we're looking at not past Eaton Place, um, to the west, or not past Drew Avenue, uh, to the east into the Minneapolis, uh, side of, of France. So, uh, from my perspective, um, you know, there certainly isn't a conversation about the twenty-five spots of parking. Um, you know, maybe a little bit more, uh, under, under the skin than, than just the twenty-five spots because, you know, there's going to be a little bit of abrasion one way or the other, thirty-five, sixty, hundred spots. But, um, you know, when you just do the math at the, the, uh, the length of sixty feet per spot, that's about, uh, four-hundred feet. Um, if it's one-sided, less than a block, it's point-six blocks actually in, in the direction. So about a third, uh, thirty-three percent of a block, uh, if you park on both sides of the street. So we're not talking about going all the way down to Grimes. We're not talking about going all the way down to Wood, uh, Wooddale, it's relatively-
Did we lose him, Ms. Benarott? Did we lose Mark? I don't hear, uh, I don't hear Mark anymore.
The operator isn't responding to me either, um.
Well, let's, uh, let's, uh, if he gets back on the line, let's put him back on. But let's, let, let's move on to see if somebody else is on the line that wants to testify.
Sure. Our next caller, I don't have a name for. Um, his or her phone number ends with six-eight-four. Um, the operator will open that line now. If that's you, um, whose phone number ends in six-eight-four, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Yes, hello, uh, my name is Mark Yeling and I live at four-thousand-eight Sunnyside Road. Uh, thanks for your time. I'm asking that you deny the developer's application for variance. Um, I ask this because, right now, the only guarantee my family has that our neighborhood won't be overwhelmed with traffic, that our street won't be overflowing with parked cars, is the current ordinance. If that ordinance is altered or taken away, we lose our protection. The developer may indeed, uh, make handshake agreements with local businesses to secure parking, but those agreements are temporary. If ownership changes, the agreements change. And even if we were to imagine a long-term parking agreement with, say, the dentist's office on Forty-Fourth Street, it's not yet clear if that parking would be used in practicality, as others have, um, uh, wondered tonight. I ask the council to consider if you were driving to this restaurant in January, would you park a block north and west according to a small sign, uh, that tells you to go there? Or would you just park within sight of the door so you don't freeze? I think most everybody would choose to park, even in good weather, within sight of the door. Um, and then we may, uh, have a situation where parking overwhelms the neighborhood. Um, I would like to add that as a private citizen, I am held, uh, legally to the contracts that I sign. And when I hear from, uh, developers' supporters, as I have in, uh, certain hearings, uh, particularly at the Planning Commission or in public hearings, that to deny the developer his variance constitutes a punishment or somehow unfair, I would remind them that the development was approved specifically with, uh, knowledge of this ordinance, full knowledge of the existing ordinance. And, uh, it was a stipulation, uh, of that development being approved. Um, so this ordinance is approved legally. It's proved by time and tradition to protect neighborhoods from undue stress. And to then say that compliance with this ordinance, uh, would be somehow unfair, it's, uh, tantamount to signing a contract and then immediately complaining about its very clear terms. Uh, so, uh, please, uh, mayor and council members, please honor the ordinance and, uh, deny the variance to protect the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Yeling.
Again, I don't have a name for our next caller. Um, operator, I'd like to put through the caller whose phone number ends with two-nine-zero. If that's you, caller, whose number ends in two-nine-zero, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Yes, hello, my name is Evan Zach, sixty-two oh four Safer Circle. I previously lived in the Morningside neighborhood for over five years. I support this variance. This project will bring wonderful new amenities to the area, including a high-end restaurant that fits the character and prestige of the neighborhood. From what I have seen, there is more parking at this site between onsite and adjacent available stalls than many comparable developments. To the previous caller's point, many in the surrounding neighborhoods will walk to the restaurant, further reducing the burden of parking. I hope the city acts in the long-term interest of the public by approving this variance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zach.
Our next caller is Sarah Lifret. Sarah, um, please begin by, um, saying your full name and address.
Thousand-eight Sunnyside Road. Uh, Mr. Mayor and council members, um, I am speaking today to ask you to deny this application. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you brought up the small-area plan in your comments. Um, I'm sure you all recall the enormous effort, um, put into that Forty-Fourth and France small-area plan by the city staff, the community, and the council and Planning Commission. Um, and it ended up with articulated guiding principles that were designed to shape Edina's urban planning for the future. And this request applies in the face of several of those guiding principles. One was safe movement for bicycling, walking, and transit use, and making sure that vehicle traffic should be managed to discourage going through neighborhoods. And another was that parking should be hidden from view behind or beneath buildings. Well, this request would put traffic driving around in those neighborhoods, looking for parking, and this request would put parked cars out in the street. That's not what our community together decided it wanted for this neighborhood. This will not be the last property to be redeveloped at Forty-Fourth and France. What is being asked for here is going to put an enormous pressure on the community and on this neighborhood, um, enormous amounts of traffic, making that intersection that's already extremely unsafe even more unsafe. And it'll be doubled and doubled and a domino effect if, if every time one of the, with the, one of the buildings at that corner, which are undoubtedly going to be redeveloped, wants to be treated the same as this developer. About the parking agreement, the variance they're seeking is permanent. It goes on forever, it runs with the property, as they say. But the parking agreements are one-year-long at this point. And Mr. Carlson said tonight he'd be willing to consider a three-to-five-year agreement. That simply isn't good enough to protect the public interest. And if Mr. Carlson wanted to prove that, you know, he had enough parking to accommodate the overflow here, the very least he could have done was sell himself an easement for the Gateway Property, um, directly to the south, which he could do for, as you know, a dollar or anything. Um, he didn't do that. And, and during the Planning Commission, he said he wasn't interested in doing that because, quote, "Easements are not a part of a solution for us." What does that tell you? Whatever the reason could be, he doesn't want to encumber that property with an easement. Why not? If he was planning on keeping it forever, it wouldn't be a problem. It's only a problem if he's planning on selling it. And if he's planning on selling it, what does that mean for the parking agreement? It means it's not necessarily going to be there. It's not going to be there when the cars are there. And so the variance would permanently protect the developer's interests, but it would have no permanent protection for the public interest and the interest of the community. And that's why this should be rejected. Um, the line in the SPAC report that shows the solid dark line is how much parking is in the actual property, the underground spots. And that shows that you're underparked every day. So I would ask you to apply the ordinance, um, and, um, follow the words that the council member used in October and deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director Benarott, I miss Sarah's last name. What was her last name?
It's Lifret. I have L.I.F.R.E.T.
Lathrop.
It's actually, it's Lathrop, yeah. Thank you.
How do, how do you spell that, Sarah? I don't have it correct in my screen.
L.A.T.H.R.O.P.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, we do not currently have anyone in the queue, though I show eight more people on the call. If any of those people would like to testify, please press, uh, star one now. Okay, that's effective. Um, the next two I don't have names for, um, but the first one we'll hear from, your number ends in seven-two-five. If that's you, please begin by fully stating your, uh, name and address.
Hi, this is Jane Monquist. I live at forty-five-ten Drexel Avenue. I oppose the request, um, for a threefold increase in the restaurant seating. Um, the revised request is full of conditions like employee transit that aren't enforceable. My main objection, though, is that it doesn't jive with the small-area plan. And the development, in fact, was delayed a year because the city wanted to be sure that it was considered within the context of the small-area plan. And as noted earlier, we know that plan took a lot of time and goodwill and so on. Um, it did note that traffic is an existing problem right up front on page eight, and also prioritized maintaining the village feel of the, of that note. Um, so the key thing that I want to focus on is that, that thirty-six surface stalls that have the public easement. And without repeating things that have been said, I don't have faith that the stars will align so that we can create a green-roofed public lot out of multiple private parcels, as the small-area plan suggests as a possibility. I don't think we should plan on that and bank on that. Um, and I also, um, just wanted to note a couple of things in response to the developer's comment tonight. Pushing thirty-five potential, um, spots out onto street parking into Minneapolis is absolutely, I think, against the holistic intent of this small-area plan. I really, um, object to the us versus them, them thinking of Edina, Minneapolis in that area. And I cycle north on France and I cycle east on Sunnyside into Forty-Fourth and Minneapolis. And I assure you that parallel parking cars really don't jive with bike-friendly policies that we're trying to put forward in the small-area plan. Um, and as a frequent pedestrian, I also know that parallel parking cars do back up traffic often into the nearby intersection. So the thirty-six slots that we have to use for district are great and are important. And I just encourage council to think forward. Don't think of status quo. We'll be adding more restaurants. The Riveter, um, facility up in the Odd Sellers Hall at Forty-Fourth and France is hosting more and more events. That's terrific for the area. And we also know, though, that that parking lot is likely to go away if, um, they develop that area next to it into a preschool, which would be wonderful for the area. But we will have need for overflow parking, and so please keep that in mind. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Montress.
Our next caller's phone number ends in two-nine-nine. Um, operator, please open that line. If that's you with a phone number ending in two-nine-nine, please begin with your full name and address.
Yes, hello. Uh, my name is Alan Schultz. Last name is S.C.H.U.L.T.Z. I live at forty-three-twenty-seven France Avenue South. And I guess the reason why I'm calling, uh, in tonight is I live further north on France and I've lived here for twenty-two years. So I'm probably not affected as much with the traffic overflow. Um, but with my years of experience of living in the neighborhood, I think there's a small, important fact that's been brought up that I think just needs to get scratched from the conversation. And those are the spots on the east side of France Avenue. Uh, as the caller just mentioned, the thirty-six spots shouldn't even be part of the conversation because anyone who has lived here and done any studies, although this doesn't show in the traffic study, those spots are full, they're taken, particularly at the peak times that were shown in the, uh, the charts of the parking study. So I, the, the reason why that's important is that, just so you know, the parking is not going to flow to those stalls. When it flows on-street parking, it's going to go to Sunnyside. And people need to be aware of that. So I, you know, I'm not going to comment, you know, much further on that. But if you think that those are a buffer from the neighborhood on Sunnyside, um, that's, uh, you, 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 you kind of, um, kind of off-base on, on that one. And, and the story's been written many times, you know, Red Cow is just, is just one example of that. The second thing are the parking arrangements. Um, you know, the building is there for thirty, forty, fifty-plus years. So any parking arrangements, the ones proposed, sound great, but there are no guarantees. And, uh, you know, no guarantees generally, you know, down the line at some point, the, you, you're going to have an issue, right? Something's going to roll back on those agreements, something's going to change. So it's very hard to, I think, justify and bank on that parking when, um, you know, it's just a, a one-year agreement or lease. The interesting thing is with the proposal of the easement, um, on the other property, you know, Orion's interested in not doing any, you know, nor easements on their property. But in this proposal, I find it interesting that they have no problem mentioning the easement of other people to access the, uh, of other people to access that other parking lot. So I think that's kind of a little catch-22 there that, you know, you're against easements, but you're definitely happy to use other peoples when they exist to try and come up with a solution.
Fifteen seconds.
So I think those are just a couple of problematic. Those are just a couple of the issues I think the council has to deal with in addition to the long list of the concessions that they've already made.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
We do have someone else queued up and ready to go, but just as a reminder, for those of you who are on the call, if you would like to provide testimony, please be sure to press star one so that you get in the queue and we know you'd like to speak. For now, operator, I'd like you to put through the caller whose number ends with 985. If that's you, please begin by stating your full name and address. If your phone number ends with 985, please begin your...
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay. My phone, my phone number doesn't end in the number she's talking about, but I've waited a long time. My name is Shirley Rerat, 49...
Start over again, please.
Excuse me?
Would you start over again, please, with your name and address?
My name is Shirley Rerat, 4913 Kaiton Court. My comment is, what about social distancing? You have a restaurant that is supposed to seat around 90-some people. How in the world are you going to do that with this day and age and the disease that's out there? That's my question. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you.
Next caller I show has a phone number that ends in 093. If that's you, please go ahead with your full name and address.
Hello, my name is Terry Lottie. I'm at 4360 France Avenue South, and I just have three quick comments. One, I am wondering and hoping that consideration has been given to parking spaces designated for carryout-only since we're now getting into the habit of carryout or takeout. Are parking spaces allocated for bikes, people who want a bike, and will there be space for Uber and Lyft drop-off and pickup? Next point, I was wondering, my understanding from the Planning Commission meeting was that the outdoor seating on the patio was not counted as part of the 100 seats in the restaurant. So how much outdoor patio seating is anticipated in the warmer months, and has that been factored into the number of parking spaces needed? And finally, maybe coinciding with what others have been talking about somewhat on France Avenue, it might be unwise to assume that France Avenue will even be an option for on-street parking once the metro, E-line, Rapid Transit bus service begins in three to four years. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lottie.
And we have one more caller who's queued up. Again, if you're still on the line and would like to provide testimony, please be sure to press star one. But next up, we have a caller whose number ends in 561. Please begin with your full name and address.
Hi, this is Ann Olson, 4307 Eaton Place. I am calling in tonight to ask the city council to approve the reasonable variance request by Orion Development. As a new resident in the Morningside neighborhood, my family was drawn here for the walkability and access to great restaurants and shops. I agree with the mayor's earlier comment that in instances like these, we need to balance the desire for these neighborhood amenities that can create great and diverse neighborhoods with the infrastructure that's needed to support those neighborhoods. I believe with the nearby off-street parking that the developer has arranged for, even the staff found that this use and the variance approval would not alter the character of the neighborhood. I think the city council should support and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve the variance as they correctly reviewed the expert opinions on parking studies and analysis that showed that the character of the neighborhood will remain, and we would benefit from the 100-seat restaurant at this location. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Olson.
Our next caller's phone number ends in 230. If that's you, please begin with your full name and address.
Hi, my name is Mary Kay Ricehead, and I live at 4055 Sunnyside Road. And I'm calling to ask that you deny Orion Investments 4500 France Avenue parking variance. The congested area is already overparked, and now the developer is trying to shoehorn in a restaurant three times larger than agreed upon, giving neighboring residents and businesses a traffic and parking nightmare. The seat restaurant is short parked by 25 stalls, according to city zoning. The SPAC report attempts to diminish the parking shortage with projections. However, the SPAC report only speculates parking excess scenarios and doesn't make any attempt to project anticipated shortfalls, and I think this creates a biased and incomplete look at the true parking needs up there. Obvious shortfalls include the fact that once the restaurant is up and running, the adjacent retail businesses are going to expand their hours to take advantage of the added traffic to the area, and that's going to create a bigger window of underparking. The Lorient apartment building is supplying one parking stall per bedroom. That meets code, but the vast majority of couples who share a bedroom have two cars, especially in a luxury apartment building with rents over $2,500 a month. SPAC should estimate this if we're looking for a real parking assessment. With 45 apartments, that could cause an excess of 30 or more vehicles that aren't even being considered, and I'd like to know where Lorient Leasing Office is telling the residents that they should park their second vehicles. The 90 or so residents that will be living in the 45 apartments will no doubt have guests, and they'll probably have more guests than the average apartment dweller because their friends and family can come over and have dinner downstairs or go to any of the area amenities. Does SPAC care to speculate on guest activity and how many parking stalls they might require? Many of the residents will have cleaning people, babysitters, service people, all who will arrive by vehicle and require parking. Does SPAC care to speculate on what those numbers are going to be? All day long, I see my neighbors and even myself receive deliveries from Amazon Prime, UPS, FedEx, Uber Eats, DoorDash, Instacart, Bite Squad, and more. Does the SPAC traffic study want to multiply those by 90 or more residents in the... Any place that they can make the numbers look better?
Did we lose her, Ms. Bennerott?
Sounds like she lost her connection there. Mary Kay, if you want, if you're still listening and want to call back, we'll prioritize you in the queue. We currently do not have anyone in the queue, though we still have five other people on the line. If any of them would like to speak, please press star one. And that gives us...
Yeah, if you can hear us, Ms. Ricehead, you should think about calling back in to finish your comments.
Sounds good. Right now, we have a caller whose number ends in 728. If that's you, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Julie Schmidt, 411 Sunnyside Road. Laws matter, don't they? If the law doesn't apply here, then when does it? In this case, Orion has decided to ignore the city's law and bet on getting yet another variance approved by you. Is this really the behavior we're going to keep inviting and encouraging from this developer? The agreements that Orion has suddenly put in place with a couple of nearby businesses are meaningless, and they can evaporate at any moment. One agreement, the Masonic Lodge, coincidentally fell through the night of the Planning Commission's meeting last week. These agreements are not permanent solutions to the parking problem, yet this variance is very permanent. So what happens when the developers' agreements dissolve, potentially the day the restaurant opens? There's nothing protecting the residents from absorbing all of the associated parking and traffic issues. Commissioners Nemirov and Douglas understood this and voted no last week. You cannot just toss a law out the window and accept agreements that have no teeth and ultimately leave the residents absorbing the burden of a poor decision. Orion has residential parking, extra residential parking spaces in its building. It could use for this retail parking shortfall, but it refuses to do so. Orion could look at easements if serious about a solution. It refuses to do so. Orion would like the neighborhood to absorb this burden and the extreme costs associated with it. The developer got a lot of tip money for this project. Is Mr. Carlson planning to give some of that back? I'm personally all for a bustling corner. I'm from Chicago. I love walkable and urban, but we need to have adequate parking and do this project responsibly. It's the whole reason we spent countless hours on a small area plan. I'm hoping that process wasn't a joke. A neighborhood restaurant would be great, and we're all excited about the possibility. There's plenty of great 35 to 45-seat restaurants in the Twin Cities. Tilia, Grand Cafe, Zumbro, to name a few. These are the type of restaurants that Orion has adequate parking to support in approval to put in his building today. Council members, uphold the law, protect your residents. The developer knew what the rules were two years ago. Enough of these bait and switch tactics.
Fifteen seconds.
A deal is a deal. Deny this variance. There's no hardship here. This is self-imposed by the developer. In fact, Mr. Teague's report shows that statutory elements for a variance cannot be satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connect.
Yeah, our next caller ends with a phone number ending in 888. If any of the other callers still on the line would like to speak, please press star one now to be in the queue following this resident. Caller, please go ahead by stating your full name and address, including apartment or suite number if applicable.
Thank you. This is Matt Kramer at 4,005 Sunnyside. Thanks to my neighbor Julie Schmidt. I get to keep this short and simple since she stole some of my thunder. I am against the variance, however, I am in favor of a 100-seat restaurant. Reason I'm against this variance is the lack of permanence for any of the alternative options for parking. What I would like to see is the residence apartment already has extra spots based on the parking study. I'd love to see them expand the retail parking from the lower-level apartment unit parking. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Just a reminder, if you'd like to testify tonight, please press star one after calling into the conference line. Our next caller's phone number ends with 230. Please begin by stating your full name and address.
Hi, this is Mary Kay Ricehead, calling back. I got cut off before. I was talking about the SPAC report being biased and one-sided, and I think I got to the part where I said...
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, sorry. So all day long, I see my neighbors and myself receive deliveries from Amazon Prime, UPS, FedEx, Uber Eats, DoorDash, Instacart, Bite Squad, and more. And does SPAC traffic study want to multiply those by 90 or more residents in the Lorient apartment? Instead, SPAC keeps revising the parking study, looking for any place to make those numbers look better for the desperately underparked Orion project. I could go on and on, but I think you get the point. If you want to do a parking study to circumvent a code, you need to look at both where you'll find excess parking and where you'll have shortfalls. Then you'll have a real, accurate picture of the parking situation, not just the data that fits your desired narrative. Instead of speculating on what might happen with parking at 4500 France, I'm asking that you simply follow the original agreement and the zoning requirements that are in place and deny this parking variance. I would also like to correct a previous comment stating that a 2018 parking study showed local parking lots were 50% open. That data included all of the private parking spots, like Convention Grill and local businesses that are off-limits to the general public, and I remember that because I wrote you a letter, so I wanted to mention that. And also, I wish that you would check out the parking count if you're really considering the 44th Street dental lot. I don't believe there's 24 spots there, and I had heard from, it was actually on the Better Together site, a Michael Gare who worked in land development pointed out that it was 15 spots, and if you eyeball it, it looks more like 15, but you should probably check it out. So thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Ricehead.
I currently have anyone on the queue, though I still have three callers on the line. If any of those three people would like to testify, please press star one now. Counsel, I would recommend you stay open for the public hearing for another minute or so in case anyone still calls in. If no one else calls, and I think you can move on. I have Robert Cundy back. Robert, would you please begin by stating your full name and address?
Yes, my name is Robert Cundy, and again, I live at 4521 Drexel Avenue in the Country Club. There are so many points to be made here. I'm going to start with another quote from the small area plan. "Many of the residents are pleased with the current situation, and if given a choice between the certainty of today and the uncertainty of the future, would opt to leave things as they are." That's on page 14 of the executive summary in the Small Area Plan for 44th and France. And frankly, that's what we're hearing tonight. We are hearing fear, we are hearing misinformation, we are hearing apprehension about change in a neighborhood that needs change. We have to remember that what used to be on the site of this building was a chemical plant, and what residents said is that they would have rather had that than basically anything else. What you're not hearing tonight are facts that dispute the studies and expert testimony that's been presented to council. The BECO study from the Small Area Plan, and this is in reference to your question earlier, Mr. Mayor, it's page 66 of the Small Area Plan, specifically states that business parking in the district is never more than 53% full. Previous caller was correct. They are referring to the private parking for places like Convention Grill and the dental offices, et cetera. And the point isn't that people could go and use those spaces from the restaurant. The point is that our code necessitates that businesses dedicate more space to parking than is needed. You heard Max Morland state that from SPAC earlier, that the codes are restrictive and that data changes and that that data is trending towards less parking. If you read the traffic study for the 4532 project, it notes that the parking numbers are changing in these studies, not because they're trying to fix the numbers, they're changing because SPAC constantly gets new data from the Institute of Traffic Engineers. That data is used to model parking needs, and nationwide, parking needs are decreasing. I'd point out that Orion doesn't pay SPAC. The city pays SPAC. The city selected SPAC to perform this study. So the notion that Orion has some backdoor deal with SPAC to try to shoehorn this in is just not true. The parking lots are not full. People can claim they are, but the studies say they aren't. The BECO study said that traffic in the district was at normal levels for the types of streets that are in the district. That's on page 64. People can say the roads are over-trafficed, but the studies say that they aren't. The parking study here predicts a peak usage of 53 vehicles. The developer has made 51 spots available for the flexibility to add four more for 55. We are talking about two cars for one hour a day. This isn't cars double-parked up and down every street that every person who's within a block is concerned about. Two parking cars, one hour per day. Fear should not guide the development of this community. I ask that you approve this variance, and everyone like it, like the variance that was unanimously approved an hour ago for the exact same fact pattern next door. Precedent was set. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Mr. Cundy.
Next, we have Clayton Umler. Clayton, please begin by stating your full name and address.
Hi, this is Clayton Umler, 4233 Scott Terrace. I guess I couldn't really articulate it better than some of the others have, but I recommend that you vote... that you vote no on this variance as well. I think the studies, I think as a previous person pointed out, the studies are, they do have numbers, and no one's disputing the numbers, but also the numbers are subjective. Right? If you're walking down there as a human, not as a math problem, but you're a human standing in that corner, and it looks busy, well, it's busy. And you're a little scared to cross the street, well, that's a human emotion. So I think that the numbers, yeah, they say one thing, but everyone in that street, and I'm over on Scott Terrace, but everyone on Sunnyside I've heard call is against this. That's because they've seen this happen over and over. Red Cow, even the Tinto Kitchen, what is it, Pizzeria Lola? I mean, all those cars are parked in front of their houses. People are turning around in the driveways while their kids are out there playing. I just think it's a safety issue, and also, this developer received TIPS funds for this. And so I think the public should have some say with where their money is going. It sounds like most of us are saying, hey, you know, it's going to be busy, and it's not going to be safe, and we're uncomfortable with this. So maybe let's revise this. And that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton.
We have two more callers on the line. If either would like to speak to the council, please press star one now. If neither of them indicated desire to speak, counsel, I would recommend that you hang Counsel, I think you can move on.
All right. Thank you, Director Benarott. Colleagues, we've had, by my count, 19 folks that have offered testimony in this matter. And it takes us back full circle of the conversation we had on the prior matter, and that is, would we want to hold this matter open for supplemental public testimony as we did on Hankerson until the following Wednesday, which would be the 13th at noon, and then close it up for further testimony, either by leaving messages on the call-in line or sending in emails? Or would we want to close the public hearing now and deal with this matter? Just to get a verification from Director Teague that we're safe on the clock, 60-day clock. If we did continue this for, hold the public hearing open until noon on the 13th and then close it and wait it until the 19th, meeting on the 19th of May to deal with this, we're still within the timeframe allowed to make a decision?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council, you are safe on this one. The deadline is May 19th to make a decision.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What are the thoughts of my colleagues on this matter? Whether to hold it open for supplemental public testimony until the 13th at noon, or to close the matter now, close the public hearing now, and potentially rule on this matter tonight? If we decide to do, I guess either way, I've got a few questions that have come up, and maybe that's something we could deal with first. There were a few questions I thought that we needed to have answered.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Stotan.
Just on this question of whether we can make a decision tonight or not. My kind of inclination in general is to take a little longer, given the circumstances that we're in. But I have to say, having watched the planning commission meeting and having read through BetterTogetherEdine.org and having read all of the emails that we've received and heard all of the comments tonight, all of which, by the way, are really well-stated. I mean, people have been articulate and thoughtful, and, boy, I know, I feel like I know as much about this as I'm going to know, and I'm not going to know a whole lot more about it by the 19th. So I'd be willing to do it tonight, but I'm also happy to wait if others aren't comfortable.
Yep. I think you make an interesting point, and that was an issue we addressed on the 19th. Because we are in a virtual world here for our hearings, there are people that may or may not be comfortable getting on the phone line, waiting to talk to us. And we did decide to accommodate, at least in that circumstance, leave open the opportunity for supplemental testimony. That same thought probably is applicable here this evening, but I'm eager to hear what else other colleagues of ours have to say. And thank you for those thoughts, Member Stotan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I'm Rand.
You know, to me, the nature of this testimony tonight and the numerous emails, I'm certain that Better Together has even accumulated more in the course of the evening. I compare this to, say, the Hankerson project and say, if that was worthy of an extension to consider other data or other testimony that comes in, seems as if that would be appropriate here as well.
Thank you, Member Anderson. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Anderson. I think we have to sort of draw a line and pick the ones that, where we, you know, because of the situation we're in and then the difficulty, people can't just walk up to the podium and talk to us. I think, and the fact that they're clearly differing opinions on this, and we're getting a lot of those, to allow us the time to take in all of those thoughts and then come back at the next meeting and deliberate.
All right. Thank you, Member Fisher. Member Brendel?
I'm not sure that we're going to hear anything different than we've already heard, but there may be people who we haven't heard from who would like to be heard. So there is that. And Member Anderson's point is well-taken. We're not looking at Better Together tonight because we're here and we're in a meeting. So we're not aware of what might have come through tonight on Better Together. So not able to consider that. I guess, you know, I don't think there's any harm in holding it over and letting the public hearing go until the 13th at noon. And if we don't get any more information than we currently have, then we know that. And I guess I could go either way on it, but I'm fine holding if that's what the majority of us want to do.
It seems to me that, I recall that when we first took this matter up in conjunction with the first public hearing we had in our new virtual world, which was the Hankerson matter, what was recommended to us was that we follow the model that I think had been established by the League of Minnesota Cities because they were concerned about due process. And it seems to me that those reasons that were expressed then are still applicable now. The matter we just heard, that we decided, where we decided to close the public hearing are maybe more the exception than the general rule, but it seems to me that if we're following a process that the league was recommending or other organizations that we belong to were recommending to make sure that we had an abundant amount of due process in this new virtual world, that leaving it open is a good idea, an appropriate idea.
Yeah.
So I think I would favor leaving it open for supplemental public testimony, either for or against, until noon on the 13th of May, and then close the public participation, close the public hearing, and then rule on it on the 19th. So if that's something that people are comfortable with, entertain a motion of that effect.
So moved. Second?
All right, we've got a motion by Member Fisher, second by Member Brendel, that we hold this matter open for further public testimony verbally or in writing until the 13th of May at noon, and then the hearing, the public hearing portion will be closed, and we would rule on this matter at our regularly scheduled meeting on the 19th of May, 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Member Fisher.
I just, I did want to ask one question of either Mr. Teague or Mr. Knutson. That's just kind of a point I would like to make, but should I do that before we take a vote, or is it okay after?
I think that's fine. You've reminded me there were a couple of questions I wanted answers to, too, and we can maybe get them tonight or get them on the 19th if they don't have the information available. But why don't you go ahead, and then we'll hold this matter for a moment.
And mine is not about the specifics of this particular variance request. Mine is about the process of a variance request. And I couldn't help notice in many of the emails that we received and in some of the comments we got tonight, and by the way, the quality of the comments were just outstanding tonight, really good information. But there was a tone in a number of them, almost an angry tone toward us, that we're considering this variance. And what I want to ask and have our attorney talk about is whether or not we actually have an opportunity to refuse to hear a variance request, because I don't think we do. But if we do, I'd like to know that. And just, you know, because it's sort of this perception that we're encouraging on a variance request, and I don't know about you, but I, you know, we spent a lot of time here tonight and involved a whole lot of our residents, and, you know, I'd just like to hear the answer to that.
All right. Thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Knutson? You're still on mute, Roger? Roger, you're on mute. Somebody let Roger off mute?
There we go.
First thing we do on here is off. No, I'm off.
You're off. We can hear you.
We're following the process required by our ordinance and by state law. They have the right to apply for a variance, and it's your obligation to decide whether to approve it or not.
All right. Thank you.
When an applicant comes to staff, staff doesn't have the option to tell them, no, you can't apply for this, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor? Mr. Mayor? With respect to the vote, I am supportive of the motion, but I do think it'd be worth going through any other questions that have come up while they're fresh in people's minds. And that doesn't mean we couldn't ask more questions the next time around. It might help for people who want to make more comments as well.
Yes, thank you for saying that, because that's just what I was going to do. There was a question, I think it was by Kerry Lathie over at 4960 France Avenue South, actually a couple. And Director Teague may know this.
Should we vote on the motion first and then go through the...
No, we can do that, sure. Yeah, so let's vote on the motion to postpone hearing this matter until the 19th of May and hold the public hearing open until noon on the 13th of May and then close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brendel?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Stotan?
Hi.
Mayor Hugland?
Hi. So Kerry, a couple of the questions that I wrote down were, was patio seating counted or not in the traffic counts? And then there was a comment about, what about bike parking? What about carryout? What about space for dropping off people that are using Rideshare? Those were some of the questions I think Kerry Lathie raised. I was curious about.
Yes, Mayor and members of the council, in terms of the outdoor seating, our ordinance does not require extra parking for outdoor seating. It's been our experience that oftentimes in the summertime, when people are sitting outside, the restaurant space inside has quite a few open seats. But our code doesn't require extra parking for outdoor seating. In regard to the number of bike stalls, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but they were required as part of the original final development plan. It's based on a percentage of the parking stalls that they provide. As I recall, they were doing some, quite a bit of bike parking on the site. And in terms of the Uber and Lyft location, that might be a question for Mr. Carlson, if he's got any ideas on. I would imagine that those kind of things would either take place along Sunnyside, I guess could happen on France, and/or even within the parking ramp itself.
Mr. Carlson, are you still with us? There you are. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. As part of our parking plan, we've got short-term drop-off and delivery stalls planned to only accommodate Uber or deliveries, but also for residents.
Were there other questions that, oh, I know, was guest parking was also raised by, I think, Ms. Reichstedt, Mary-Kate Reichstedt. Was, you know, how many guest parking spots do you have, Mr. Carlson?
I don't know. We've finalized our guest parking stalls. I could provide an updated parking map in the next days.
Also, the question was asked with regard to folks that are coming, service-related people, whether it be cleaning services or other folks coming for other reasons, whether it might be plumbing or electrical. Do those get factored into space availability there for parking?
We can accommodate, you know, workers within the building or elsewhere for matters similar to our project that we have next door. Those employees have private access to private and secure parking. It's typical in apartment buildings to have cleaning service available with one cleaner, where they keep their supplies and everything else on-site throughout the building. So frankly, from our seat, there's very low concern.
All right. Thank you. Other questions that other council members may have written down or recall or comments by Mr. Carlson have prompted questions at all?
I have one.
Yes, Member Brendel?
Thank you. So in the materials provided and in the resolution for approval, there is a requirement that staff who work at this restaurant or at a retail establishment that would be in this building take transit or Uber or walk, but they, in essence, they don't drive and have to park. How can you mandate how a person gets to work? And if that is included in the resolution, how would that be, how could the city enforce it? How could the property owners of the Lorient enforce it or the property owners of the establishment itself?
Yeah, great question. Thank you, Councilmember Brendel. We can enforce that to a lease with a restaurant operator, and that's a binding document between whether it be us as landlords and that operator is. The operators assured us many times that most of their staff are not in, or not in a position to drive everywhere, and often share a car with the family. A lot of their staff is dropped off or takes transit. So that's one of the areas where we can provide some of our other off-site parking stalls that's available to employees should that be necessary. As far as what enforcement is, you know, I would suggest that we could use the same enforcement that we've got for other parking solutions and/or subject to some sort of reasonable fine that's in line with other parking.
I guess what occurs to me is that the experience at 50th and France, that in some cases, we've found that employees at the... in some cases, we've found that employees at the businesses like to have the most convenient parking to their job, where the idea is that we want to hold that most convenient parking for customers. And so it is, it's a continual challenge to have employees of the businesses in the area respect the parking rules, if you will, not restrictions, but rules, and, and follow them. So when, when I saw this, and it's included in the resolution, it just kind of looked like something that could become a problem in the future.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carlson? Oh, yes, Member Fisher?
Actually, this question's for Kerry Teague. Kerry, a number of the comments that came up in this round of the hearing related to the, the parking study, and, and who the consultant was working for, or what their sort of interest might be. Can you just outline for us, what's the protocol when we're having these parking studies done? Who's hiring them? How are they getting selected? And, and just all of that?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Fisher, members of the council. The consultant is selected by city staff. SPAC kind of has the corner on the 44th and France area. You know, they've done a lot of asked studies. So the, the develop, what we do is we ask SPAC to provide a scope of work, you know, what it's going to cost for them to provide the study and, and, and attend our meetings. So based on that estimate, then the developer gives the city a check for the amount of the study, and the city hires, hires the consultant to do the study.
But the consultant is working for you?
The consultant is working for the city, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that question, too, Member Fisher.
I, I have one. Thank you. In this time of pandemic, at the planning commission meeting, it was mentioned by Mr. Carlson that the restaurant opening would be around October 1st, and we will for sure still be social distancing at that point. Is it really reasonable to think that you could have a restaurant with 100 seats in it? And what is, what is the restaurant owner's plan if we are still social distancing at that point, and probably for another at least 18 months until a vaccine is available, and it could be, it could be now just a way of life for us? So is 100 seats in that square footage even reasonable?
My back up. Thank you for the question, Councilmember Brendel. You know, we, we looked at what 100-seat restaurants are in the area, and frankly, it's modeled somewhat after the size of Convention Grill. It's across the street, and which is slightly smaller. Coalition, which is slightly larger. We'll follow the guidelines and recommendations, just like every other restaurant will have to. And frankly, I, I don't believe that any restaurant operator would want to take the risk of not abiding by the state guidelines and rules. In fact, Rebecca Ellingsworth at Tinto Kitchen is doing takeout only right now at her, her restaurant, like others. And so she's proven to me that she can follow the rules. So, you know, God willing and good speed that COVID's out of here sooner rather than later. But I don't believe that, I would, I don't believe she'd be any riskier than any, any other restaurant operator. Lastly, with your previous question popped into my head, that I believe that the district parking at 50th and France, those have employees dedicated parking?
Uh, yes, they do. And it's just not abided by, by all employees. That's what I'm saying.
Yep. We, we think we've got a better solution where employees servicing the project, we have avail, availability to park down below in the secure parking area, people are dedicated working on the project. Not for the retail piece, the operations.
All right. Other questions? Yes, Director Teague, comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there was a, I believe it was a comment, maybe a question by the council about the BECO traffic study that was part of the 44th and France plan. And there was a-
I think Mr. Cundy made that comment, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, and the statement was about 50, 53%. The lots were never more than 53% full. I can verify that. The study, it looks like they took some counts up there in the district in the middle of June, a couple of years ago. And their conclusion was that they never found the surface parking stalls in the whole district. And they're saying there's 209 parking stalls, private parking stalls. They were never more than 50%, 53% full. So that is true.
All right. That prompt any other questions or comments?
Just one. A light bulb went off when Member, when Member Brendel was talking about distancing, restaurant distancing. And what I note is that the difference in square footage, in the, the proposal that has been approved, the restaurant square footage, and 100 seats, it's 144 feet. So the common areas have already been satisfied, I guess is what I'm saying. And the ADA compliance has been met. So there's a lot of square footage there in that space, which, and only moderately more, that increases seating capacity. And while I understand that parking is the issue, in terms of spacing and seating, you could accommodate that very easily, Member Brendel, in the existing space, or even moderately more seating if that were possible. So just, just a point to follow up.
I thought, member, or not member, but I thought that Mrs. Re-Rat's comment was an interesting one about, you know, what about social distancing? And, Member Brendel, you've, you've plumbed that issue. But certainly, the, the state and the executive orders of the governor are going to mandate what the requirements are going to be, Minnesota Department of Health, with respect to restaurants, when they do finally get a chance to reopen. So they'll, they'll deal with that as it comes, regardless of the number of seats in a restaurant. So, all right. Anything else, colleagues? All right. We'll take this matter up then on the 19th for decision. And, um-
Oh, sorry.
Yes. Yeah, Members-
Sorry.
We already voted. Yeah. Okay. So we'll move on now to correspondence petitions. That was our last public hearing matter. Is there anything that's come in, Ms. Allison, or Manager Neal, that we need to know about, other than what was provided to us before the virtual meeting?
No.
All right. Thank you. Aviation noise update, Member Brendel?
Thank you. So the Noise Oversight Committee is meeting virtually. Our next meeting, so we have a, we have a pre-meeting just before the regular meeting. But with virtual meetings, the pre-meeting is on Tuesday, May 19th. And the NOC, the Noise Oversight Meeting is the following day on May 20th. So I'm noticing that I didn't put the time. The, the pre-meeting for the NOC is at 2:00 on the 19th, and the formal meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee is at 1:30 on May 20th.
All right. Thank you. Manager Neal, anything supplementally there?
Nothing, nothing to add to that.
Okay. Thank you. On to council comments. Member Anderson, you want to lead us off?
Yes, thank you. You know, we've all been confined to quarters for a long time. And it puts, puts a little stress on the system, each one of our individual systems, as well as this meeting format. It's been an interesting conversation to, to conduct public hearings in this setting. And I, but I think we've done a pretty good job of it. I think we've done as well as can be done under the circumstances. And so I'm appreciative of that. However, I, I, I sense that there's tenseness in the community and around. You see that on the various social media. And I, I sat down here tonight thinking, could we have a little fun? Could we introduce a little levity? And I, I, I thought maybe I'd give you a report on all the projects I've caught up with. I won't do it, because it's late. Although I'm very proud of the garage floor. But you know, I, I think, I would just love for residents to chime in, throw on, on Better Together, what they've been doing. It's been fun. You know, I'm happy to read their, their task list and what they've accomplished. Maybe they reseeded their yard. Maybe they got their bike mileage up to 20 miles a day. I, you know, I'd like to have some fun with this as well. I, I, I just like to, to move the, the enjoyment notch up just a little bit, and not be so consumed with what's wrong, and how opposed we are to one thing or the other, or what's, what's bad, and how do we ever, if that's okay. I mean, there's plenty of time for that in life. But any suggestions that you might have, and how to do that, I'd be, I'd be very open to as well. So that's my comment for tonight. Thank you.
Oh, good. Thank you. That was a good one. Member Fisher?
So you're gonna make me go after that? Come on. I've got nothing fun, nothing humorous. And I haven't accomplished anything. So I don't know where to go with that. Now, I don't really have anything special tonight. But I do appreciate Councilmember Anderson's comments.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
Uh, thank you. So just a quick one. Actually, I have two. In the donations tonight, actually, I have a very funny, speaking of levity, I have a very funny that I will send to all of you. But, so in the, in the donations tonight, we accepted a $500 donation from Edina Morningside Rotary Club to the City of Edina, and that went toward planting a white pine at Strakow Park. And so it's, it's something the club is very proud of, and, and very happy to do, to partner with the city on Luther Overhold and his team. Luther is the city arborist. He and his team were just terrific to work with. So thank you so much for that. And I will write a note of thanks to Luther, but just to, to publicly let you know how lucky we really are to have both his, his character and personality, but as well his, his expertise on staff at the city. And then it was last Monday, a week ago yesterday in the evening, I did one of my most favorite things, and that is I met with a Cub Scout pack. And pack 168, fourth grade Weebalos are working on their citizenship merit badge. And we met in a virtual meeting. And so I gave a little presentation about government. And, and then we opened it up to Q and A. It worked very well, and a variety of questions. I think the, the question that caught me the most off-guard was, what are the pros and cons of coronavirus? And I, I had to just stand back for a second, but the, I came up with some pros, that, you know, when you have to stay home, you kind of center your life, and, and you get back to basics a little bit. And, and the cons are that you have to wear a mask, and you have to think and be careful about everything you do. But I think, in essence, it was a, it was a chance to, to meet with a bunch of young people. And, and as a teacher, I know that in the time that I spend with my students, I do, I do ask them, what's, you know, what's on your list? What's most important to you? And that really does help ground me and keep me aware of what, what we're doing, and, and why, and, and for whom. So that's what I have.
Thank you. Member Stottin?
Oh, I guess I would, maybe the category between Councilmember Anderson and Councilmember Brendel is the glass half-full category. I, I've gotten to spend a lot more time with my wife than I used to. So that's been really nice. And I've gotten to walk the dog a lot more than I used.
There you go.
The one comment I wanted to make, just to follow up on our last conversation, is I did, in light of Member Brendel's comment, I pulled up the Better Together website while we were talking. And I do notice that we have listed, we've, we've gone ahead and listed the Wednesday after as the, as the time when we will no longer take comments. So in the 4532, I don't think will be a big deal, because nobody really seemed to be weighing in on that. But if we are going to change what we're doing, and we didn't tonight on anything except that one, we should align it with what we're putting on the website, just to make sure of doing that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you. You know, I've noticed that, I guess particularly rotary meetings, where Member Brendel and Member Stottin and I are members of the same Rotary Club, the desire for social interaction, even on a screen, causes the meeting to kind of extend, as people just hate to sort of let go of any social contact they have, even if it's a virtual sort of contact. And to Member Anderson's point, that there, there are things to talk about, and, and linger over in conversation. And, and the idea of letting us know what you've worked on at your house, or what other things you've had that are really positive, Remember Brendel's comment about positive sort of, positive side of COVID-19, it'd be interesting to hear that. I don't know if I talked about this or not, but I don't, I don't see any of you in really desperate need of a haircut. But I was thinking that when, I know this thing won't switch off, where we have a clean break, and we go to, everybody's healthy again. But when we get to the point where barbers can actually go back to work, I was thinking we should try to break the Guinness Book of World Records, if there is one, by getting all the Edina barbers out to the Edina Brimar Dome, and put them all six, eight feet apart, and try to get as many haircuts to as many guys and Edina as we can in an hour. And so I don't know if that's worth pushing with all the barbers and he died or not. But it might be kind of a fun thing to do, or some variation of that, when the time is right, and we could do something like that. I want also a compliment. I see Ryan is still on the line. Ryan Scott Denfield, Jennifer Bennerott did a wonderful job of, of monitoring and guiding folks that were calling in tonight for the public hearings. Thanks to them. Manager Neal, you've got a wonderful team of people that you're working with at the city. The pressure on them over the past six, seven, eight weeks has been extraordinary. And you've, now you've got more people coming back to work full-time, and it will be nice to have them back to work full-time in various departments. And then we've got all these folks that work for the city that are thinking about how to make other people's lives more comfortable and safer as we go through this process. And the one we got to talk about today was Nick Lovejoy, our IT Systems Administrator, talked about him on Mayor's Minute today, where he's now making face shields, and for first responders, and, and the bands that hold the face shields in place. And we've got other folks that are doing the same thing. We talked about over at Public Works, Charlie Gurkey, making the, along with other folks, making the hand sanitizer, getting it delivered to multifamily buildings. So many people illustrating in creative ways, helping others, and showing the really kind and good side of humanity. And it's really, it's really been a pleasure to see. And I think that the goodness I've seen from people far outweighs the negativity. And I think the goodness I've seen from people far outweighs the negativity that I've seen. And it's, it's challenging, it's stressful for people. And even the, even the best of us can have our moments, I'm sure, out there. But let's slog on together here. And we'll all get through this. And I think we'll be stronger for the experience of it. And in this group alone, I can see a lot of camaraderie building, even if it's on a screen with a bunch of little grid figures on it. So my thanks to all of you for serving the city so well, too. And, and I think that concludes my comments. And we'll go on to Manager Neil's comments. He may have some things he wants to talk about that are staff-related or maybe fiscal-related. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of things tonight. One, I don't have, the past two meetings in April, I had extensive comments for you on budget. I don't have extensive comments on budget for you tonight. I will tell you that, that the finance team and I and the Assistant City Manager, Schaefer, have been working through the preparation of a budget revision for 2020. And it's, it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 million in terms of reductions primarily. We're not enhancing revenues in our operations right now. Those are, we're putting, we're, we're putting together the impact information for those so that we can share that with you at, at the same time. You know, reducing our spending has an impact in the community. Some people will feel it more than others. And we just want you to know who those people are as we, as we go forward with that. And we're going to share that with you the evening of the 19th, May 19th, our next, our next council meeting. I do want to comment, though, on a subject we haven't even, we haven't touched on tonight, we haven't really touched on in a few years. And that is construction, construction hours. We have, I think you all received a number of complaints over the weekend from folks who were in, had just about enough construction noise this past weekend and began to ask what our regulations were around construction noise. Currently, for city projects, we have prohibitions about working on Sundays and holidays for a project that the city is managing, so an infrastructure project, for example. But we don't have that same sort of bar on private construction projects in the community. So right now, City Code, Chapter 23, Section 124 is where we have our allowable construction hours. And right now, they are 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 AM through 7:00 PM on Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays. So the work that people were reaching out to you to tell you about this weekend was all allowable, right? It was all, it was, it was going on on a Sunday. They didn't, they didn't need special permission from the city to, to operate on a Sunday. Is this, is this an area you'd like staff to take a crack at? An amendment to, would you like to discuss it? I'm talking about this, I had a brief discussion this week with, with the city attorney and with the building official. We could craft a compromise and bring it to you. Or would you like to have some discussion at your next council meeting or sometime in the future? Or are you happy with things just the way they are in terms of construction noise? And we'll just leave it alone?
Well, during our stay-at-home time, I think it's, people are particularly sensitive because they're at home. And there's, there's really nowhere they can conveniently get away from the noise. And in, you know, at another time, they might take off and run some errands to get away from it. But, but they can't do that right now. And so that, that kind of compounds the problem in a way. But I think that taking a look at whether the hours are too much, too long, too, too late into the evening, or start too early. So I think looking at a compromise would be, would be good. Because, I mean, it's not the first time we've heard complaints from neighbors who are close to a large building going in and hearing those pile drivers. And it won't be the last time. And as these buildings are built more closer and closer to one another, as they are, we, we will continue to hear it.
Yeah, if I could, so I, I'm hearing the pile driving and we're, you know, we're a good half mile or more away. And it resonates, you know, through the whole neighborhood. But I think the problem isn't that the work's happening on Saturday and Sunday. It's that people aren't leaving Monday through Friday.
Right, right.
To go to other places, their jobs, or whatever else they're doing. So there's really no relief. But I think we have to be careful about changing a lot of rules based on a current, a current situation. You know, that I drove over and looked at that particular site, and not every construction project has pile driving. Those, you know, it's an unusual case in some, some ways. But it's, you know, in a way, you want it just to get done. You know, pull the Band-Aid off, get it done, rather than stretch it out for weeks more. So I just think we just have to be a little careful about making it last longer by, you know, trying to fix it.
I'm certainly willing to consider it. I think it's worth a discussion.
I was just thinking, as Manager Neil was reporting out situations and calls that I've had pre-COVID from residential neighborhoods, particularly the Pamela Park neighborhood, where there is a great deal of tear-down rebuild activity. And folks were thinking on a Saturday morning that like a little bit later start, so they could sleep in. And I think Sunday is probably an entirely different issue. That, that could be a day where we want to think seriously about working at all. But, so I'm going to look at this issue as well. And particularly think about the weekend hours. I think the weekday hours, I'm pretty comfortable with those. It's the weekend that I have concerns about.
Well, and that cuts into a resident's ability to do their own project at home that produces noise. But it could be, you know, it could be that they don't start till 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning on a Sunday. But I, I can, I can see that it's not going to be the, the developer or the remodeler that's working on Sunday, could be the homeowner himself.
In fact, Councilmember Brindle, the last time we took this subject up was eight years ago. And you and Mayor Hovland were the, I think, the only two current members that were part of that discussion. And that really was why we agreed on, the hours we agreed on was the homeowner deck project, right?
Yeah, yeah.
A guy should be able to work on his deck on the weekend, on a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday afternoon. And we didn't want to interrupt that. And so we never went forward with any changes to those hours because of the homeowner deck project.
Yeah.
So that will, we'd certainly have to have some consideration of that. But we, we could, we'll take a look at maybe our data on, on building permits and, and see if there's some way that we could structure this in a way that would be helpful and bring you back some ideas. That's all I've got, Mr. Anderson.
Okay, thank you. That caused anyone else to have anything they want to do? Add in from a comment standpoint?
I sent my funny video to Scott Neil in a text.
All right, well, we'll watch for it.
So he can pass that around.
Okay.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. A motion, second to adjourn discussion. Ms. Allison, thank you too for all your fine work. You've been doing a great job for us.
Yep.
And roll call, please.
Member Anderson?
Hi.
Member Brindle?
Hi.
Member Fisher?
Hi.
Member Staunton?
Hi.
Mayor Hovland?
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.